Alright folks, it's nine o'clock, we're gonna call this a board supervisor meeting to order. Uh, Mr. Bradford, would you give us a presentation please?
I would be grateful for that.
How y'all doing? I would be grateful, I would be thankful for this day and this and the day that you've asked us to rejoice. And we glad, and as we begin to conduct the business that you have ordered us to conduct, we ask everything we've done decent in our order. Guide us through this day, and in Jesus' name we pray. Let everybody say amen.
Amen.
My question is-
Pardons to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I see we got a pretty full house today. I see Superintendent Xander McDonald near there, is that right? Hello, how are you doing? Alright, uh, I need a motion to approve the docket.
Here.
Moved by Mr. Gaines. Oh, well, let's finish this out. Uh, I need a second. Second by Mr. Gray.
Discussion.
Any discussion?
Discussion. On my old six, I mean, oh nine and six. I just wanted to make sure, uh, I think it was an appraisal. It was on that docket, two times three, two times, then we skipped it much. It was like seven, seven, uh, seven five hundred twice.
Okay.
And, uh, it was, uh, but anyway, it was like, it was duplicated twice on there. I just wanted to make sure that that was correct, it had nothing else. It's, it's on, oh nine, it is for, uh, the, uh, appraisal.
Period.
Appraisal.
It fell in a different cycle or something. Okay, any more discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any nays? Motion period. Uh, Mr. Gray has requested roll call, 'cause he wants everybody to know he's here for Dallas Cowboys, not the Cowboys. Uh, Mr. Gray.
President, I tried to get his attention while you were praying, while you ain't praying for the Cowboys.
Mr. Gray is here. Ms. Hutchins, yeah. Mr. Gaines.
Yeah.
Mr. Middleton.
President.
Ms. Dean.
President.
Lewis.
President.
Mr. Slover.
President.
Ms. Washington.
President.
And I'm here, everybody's present. Alright, special presentations if any. We have any special presentations?
My church.
Uh, is that a special presentation, Scott?
His own.
It's further on the docket, it'll be just a second though. Alright, county business. Dr. Dwayne Middleton, president of the Clark County Community College.
How's everybody doing this morning?
Good.
I want to thank you all for allowing me some time for the agenda for today, to provide you all with an update of the Clark County Community College. I have a few special members of my team here today. Uh, I've got Mr. Melvin King, our board chair. Mrs. Xander McDonald, she's one of our board members. And Dr. Fernando Goodwin, our new vice president of the Natchez campus. Um, I'll allow him a second to say a few words and a little bit. But I just want to thank you all for what you do here in Natchez County with Colleen. Um, we want you to know that Adams County and all the students in Adams County area, we want them to make sure that Colleen is the first choice. I know that, um, the universities are tugging away, they're doing a very job of recruiting, uh, but we're doing a even better job of recruiting our students to stay in the district, at least for the next, for the first two years. I think it's important, because it's the cost statement that comes with it is tremendous. Um, I can assure you that the dollar goes for all their Colleen. And we want to make sure that all students here in Adams County area come to Clark County Community College. I prepared a handout for you all, you should have one at your seats. Um, you may recognize the students in that docket. I want you to know that we're working hard to make Colleen a better place for our students in our district. This past year, we received two federal outbound grants in an amount of 1.5 million each. Um, for the next five years, we also received 1.75 million dollars for the FEMA safe room. Phase one of that FEMA safe room is a 1.75 million. This will be the largest safe room in the state of Mississippi, which will be utilized on campus for our gymnasium, for our men and women's basketball team, and for graduations, and we will house our new women's volleyball program there once this is ready. Since we're talking about athletes, we got a great year this past year. Our football team finished runner-up with the national one hard Texas Bowl. As of right now, they're two and one. We lost our breakup at Holmes Community College, but I think we found that very well. We blew Heinz out, invited Heinz graduates, hats off to y'all. We're ranked also eighth in the nation. Our ladies' boys softball team finished fourth in the nation. Coach Glenn Davis and Coach Malia Howard both were named coaches of the year. Our baseball team made it to the playoffs for the first time in ten years, so we're proud of the, uh, what they're doing and our coaches have done for our team. Our tennis team won the consolation bracket in the national championship game. Both our men's and women's soccer programs both made it to the playoffs. We're so proud of our student athletes and all of our coaches and what they do for our students and the community that we represent. I want you to know that we're grateful for the funding that we receive from Adams County Board of Supervisors. Without you all, we wouldn't be able to do what we do. It's important to know that Colleen is a solid investment, and the funding that we receive from you all really benefits our housing and our campuses, all free campuses in the county. We hope that we continue to be attentive to the government's authority for you all, and we got to deal up Adams County and all campuses that we represent. At this time, I want to have Dr. Goodwin come up and give us some campus updates, so you all know what's going on here in Adams.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, Dr. Middleton. Uh, thank you all so much for allowing me to be here today. Once again, I am Dr. Fernando Goodwin, the vice president for the Natchez campus here. And we have a lot of great things going on. When I came in, uh, one of my biggest things, just to grow the campus, uh, and like I always say, have a world-class education in your own backyard. A lot of times, a lot of our students can't afford or aren't afforded the opportunities to go all across the country, so they actually barely get their same education right here in Natchez, Mississippi. And so, uh, we've been growing, uh, we had a summer increase in enrollment, sixteen percent. And actually, my official numbers come out in a couple of weeks for the fall, uh, we're trending up for the fall enrollment as well too. So, uh, everything's going well, a lot of great programs starting back, like diesel equipment technology. Uh, also CBL who just started back last week. And a pretty more, a lot more programs we're looking to, uh, to see what the community needs, uh, and how we can be supportive, and how we can actually be a beacon for life for the community. And so, and once again, thank you all so much. Continue to support Colleen, our students, and as far as we go, the community goes, and that's our mission and that's our goal. So, thank you all so much, and God bless.
Appreciate you, man. With that being said, we appreciate this time that you've allowed us to do. Do you want to have any questions for?
Thank you, and glad to see you guys have been structured to keep that teaching program going, because we got a real need and shortage around here for mechanics everywhere. So, you know, we appreciate it, and anything I can do to help y'all, y'all problems, I'll be available on Callaway.
It's good to know that we got something right here in a community like that for these kids to go to, instead of having to go way off. A lot of them aren't ready to go off to a campus that's way off and with parents and what have you, they just don't have the money. So, it's a, it's great for us, we appreciate it.
I pretty much agree with what everybody else saying, and, uh, the price of education has gone up so high. And, uh, maybe people need to think about going to the Juco to cut down some of the expenses. Ask me how I know I got a daughter in college and she's about to kill me.
I'd like to say too, thank you for all you all do. I have a daughter who's a part of Colleen also, and like Supervisor Gray said, the education is higher. So, sometimes I tell kids and students, maybe you need to start at a junior college. Especially those who are not prepared for a four-year college, you know, university. A community college gives them a good start for that also. So, I thank you all for all you all do, and if anything you all need, you know, to hear to help you out.
Yeah, I just want to congratulate Dr. Middleton for everything the campus, the campus here doing, also the campus in Weston. I want to thank Mr. King for, uh, his representation of Adams County and Natchez on his part. If anybody's looking for anything to do on Thursday night, go over to Weston and watch a football game, there's a lot of Natchez boys on that team. And, uh, so the facilities over there are phenomenal, and thank y'all, anything we can do, we're here.
Thank you.
Just to reiterate, we have a great board that's here. Those, a lot of them are probably not here because they have other obligations. But normally I have like six to eight people here, um, to support it. So, we have full support, we have a lot of great support in this area, and we thank you all for what you do for Colleen, and we appreciate the support. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, uh, Patrice Speed, by an insurance presentation.
Thank you for letting everybody here, this is Patricia, I'm Layla, you're both welcome by. And to make this quick, it's obviously you have a full brain. We wanted the opportunity to present our benefits to your employees. We do supplement products, accident, cancer, for all this things like that. I know you currently have some carriers in here. Uh, we wanted the opportunity to present what we have, maybe help you consolidate some of your carriers, offer you more of an HR platform to enroll our products in, called Employee Navigator, uh, which other products that you offer can also be put on that same platform. And just kind of help you streamline some of those policies and products that you have.
We also have a lifetime benefit term of policy that other carriers don't provide. It's the life that's priced between a term and a whole life policy, and it has long-term care built in, so that's really unique to us.
Yeah, a lot of people are looking at that, because of the long-term care needs these days. And it's really expensive to go buy a policy just for long-term care, so we have built a policy that has it inside of our permanent life insurance.
Okay, um, Scott, do we have a day set aside, or a week or something set aside, for demi-insurance?
Not for cafeteria plans.
How do we get that, get that out to them?
How does it get out to them?
Yeah.
I mean, our HR person takes a look at them during open enrollment time, and we have a meeting where people come to, I think it's at the safe room, they sign up, pick out ones that they want to do.
And you brought some information, lead with, uh, Stephanie or, or the-
We brought some packets, so we can bring some more detailed information, maybe an example proposal, to show you more detail of our policy.
I gave mine away while you were on the way.
Yes, we do not have enough.
Okay, it's okay, no problem. Alright, anything else?
That's it.
Thank y'all for coming.
Thank you.
Have a good day. Bert Carson, sustainable solution.
Good morning.
Good morning, thanks.
So, I was asked to be here by y'all to, I think y'all have a question for us.
Um, I was seeing this as about the jail, or what is, what is this pertaining to?
Um, so, the jail is what I talked to y'all about in the past.
Right, okay.
Sheriff had said that, um, you come to the meeting, I wonder if that asked me about getting some money to take care of the debt.
Um, yeah, uh, he did mention it in the meeting, and, uh, I was the one told him to have you come to the meeting and explain to us exactly what you do.
Okay, sure.
For us taking care of the debt.
Uh, so is this debt like a bond, or is this, what, what kind of debt is this?
Yeah, were y'all talking about the total, total debt, or, 'cause of-
I thought, I thought he mentioned something that, uh, Scott, didn't the sheriff mention something that this, this company could, uh, provide some money for us, and we wouldn't have to pay for a couple of years, or something like that?
Yeah, I mean, we have all kinds of programs, I just wasn't sure exactly what the debt was. I mean, one of the things I, I guess the most recent thing I've been told about, and this is in reference to the jails, I didn't know if this is what you were talking about, was that y'all needed some money to do, I think some type of a study, about doing the jail.
I'm thinking he's talking about money for the jail, how we can fund this jail without having any debt.
Oh, sure, yeah, 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 so that, yeah, so that's what I've been talking about with y'all before. Um, yeah, so in the case of the jail, what we could do is, um, you know, we come in and we put up all the money to, um, you know, basically build the jail, if there's this environmental study, or whatever, any kind of fees, or architecture fees, or all that, that can all be wrapped up into, um, the project. Then we'll make sure that it's built correctly, done, um, like it needs to be. And then we also maintain, repair, replace anything that, you know, is part of that project as well. And so, you do not pay any money at all whatsoever while the project is under construction. You always, we come up with a monthly usage fee, and then it's very, we're very flexible in how we can do that, could be based on a prisoner, or, you know, per prisoner policy, whatever it may be. Um, and so, you don't pay anything until the project is complete. So, I think that's maybe what should come out again, probably take a couple of years to build a jail. So, you're not paying on, on that at all. So, as soon as the jail's built, y'all are happy with it, sign off on it, then thirty days later, we'd start the monthly usage fee. So, that's kind of how we work, and because it's like that, we actually, based on Gassie rules and also the Pobello law, um, because it's a month to month, every thirty days, um, you can get out. Um, it's a flexible payment, I can't remember what the third thing is, but that's what keeps it from being debt on your books, is because we're no different than the white bill. So, a lot of people look at us and say, "Yeah, but you're, you know, you're a forward obligation, so you have to be debt." Well, that light's a forward obligation, you could be paying on it for the next hundred years, but that's not considered debt, because we're a service free utility, uh, well, we're not a utility, we're a light bill. So, we would go on the same place on your books as, you know, like I said, like a light bill or anything else. Uh, but what this also does is it will keep your jail maintained forever, because again, what we're trying to look for is a hundred-year customer. And so, as things start happening, things start needing to be fixed, we're deploying more, but your usage fee is staying the same.
My question is, once this jail is complete, and then there's costs on this jail, for building this, a cost for building this jail, do the county, will the county have to pay that debt until that cost is complete, or we continue to pay debt? Because one time I was hearing, it just continues and continues, we never own, really like, never owning this jail.
Kind of so, I mean, first of all, so like I said, it's not debt. But the reason why there's this ongoing thing is because we continue to deploy money. Now, at any time, I mean, again, I'm just making simple figures, let's say that the project is a hundred dollars, and it's a forty-year-old, you know, it'll be a forty-year-old jail, or a forty-year-old structure, or whatever it may be. Um, and you're halfway through the process, then, you know, you just paid like fifty bucks and you could get out, if that's what you wanted to do, that's why I said every thirty days. But we also bring in an appraiser to make sure you're getting the value. So, if he looks at it and says, "Well, this jail really only has ten years left," then you don't have to pay twenty-five dollars and you'd be out. If he says it's got twenty-five years left, you still only pay the fifty, so we have potential on both sides. So, in essence, yes, it's a continuing thing that goes on, but that's up to you if you want to continue. Any given thirty days, you can get out. We don't mark up any, uh, any of the services, the, um, materials to build a jail, you know, any kind of fees, we don't mark up any of those, those items. So, basically, you know, what are we at, twenty twenty-four, in twenty years if you want to get out, in twenty forty-four, you're buying it at the twenty twenty-four block prices. So, in essence, it gives you a, a situation where you just never have to worry about that jail ever again.
So, uh, do you have an example of what community y'all have done this in?
Um, so, the biggest we've done in the Miss State Mississippi is Jackson, Mississippi.
Okay.
We took care of their problem. Um, in fact, when the federal government came in and took over, um, they got rid of every vendor there except us. And since that, you know, we get the water meters, and since then, they are, the federal government is looking at us to do the same thing on their water plant and on their sewer plant as well. Uh, but to give you an example, so with Jackson, and again, I don't know exactly how the finances work in the jail, but in their particular case, in, uh, in Jackson with water meters, um, you know, we went into chase the building, building, there was a lot of people that weren't even on the system. Um, they went collecting two, three million a month to seven or eight million within ninety days. So, that's again why, you know, we call ourselves sustainability partners. We're your solid partner, we want to be here for you, we want to keep everything sustained. And so, we're always looking for ways to make it better for you, or to, um, get some of your expenses, you know, taken care of. Like, right now, if you have the expense of maintaining the jail on your books, that comes off, because you're not, that's not your responsibility anymore. So, again, if I'm saving expenses, that's revenue for me.
Uh, have you done any jails that, that'll kind of be the size of ours, anywhere around the sound?
So, we, and again, we're money, so we don't, you know, we're not like the experts on building jails, we bring the experts in. Um, but as far as our company, and again, we're only like ten years old, but as far as our company actually completing a jail project, we have not. We do have about eight pending right now, around the country.
I guess you essentially own the deed of trust on the jail when it's done.
I'm sorry.
Do you own the deed of trust on the jail when it's finished?
Not necessarily the deed of trust, it's just owning the equipment.
Yeah, you wouldn't have a deed of trust on any county property.
I'm just trying to figure out, you know, they're gonna put up a lot of money, uh-
They, they own the property and they lease it to us by some sort of fee structure, and if we want to stop it, then we'll have to basically figure out the terms of how you buy it, basically, from them.
Right, okay. Because we don't do any kind of UCC filings, we can't put-
You can't file, no county can get UCC filings or liens of any sort. You're, you can mortgage your millages, basically, that's the only way it's done, or any other revenue streams can be mortgaged by a county, but not, not property itself.
Okay.
And the, the other times we book the jails or other things of this nature, we, you always kind of look at kind of a lease-purchase type of situation. Uh, there's a certain advantage to doing it, as opposed to a GO.
Okay, anybody else?
And with the new Gassie rule, if you do a lease or lease purchase, then that would be debt on your books. That's why we're a little bit different.
Okay.
I don't know, Mr. President, at this particular time with, with the financial situation that we in, uh, maybe we need to, uh, look at, look at, find out a little more information and look at doing something like this, because, uh, we can take some, run it off our books for a couple of years, and, uh, it might benefit us. So, maybe something we need to just look into.
Now, just also to let you know, kind of going back to the last name I was told, I think it was maybe from Gabby, is there a Gabby working?
Yeah.
So, again, she was talking about some study that y'all needed to do, I don't know if that's environmental stuff.
Yeah, we, we approved the money from another source to-
Okay, so you got that taken care of.
Yeah.
Because I gave her some options that we could do on that, so, so that's fine.
Yes.
To get a quote of cost, what would you need from the county?
A quote of cost?
Like-
Um, so, we would just, like, we need to scope the work of what it is that you want, and then, um, we can go from there.
Okay, anybody else? We appreciate your time and-
And again, all that money that you just talked about, if you do proceed forward with us, we can always reimburse you back that money, can wrap it into the project, if that's something, again, another option, if that's something y'all want to issue.
Yes, alright.
Okay.
Thank you for coming by.
Thanks.
Yes. Nancy Saucer, sanitation? Okay, Morgantown Road resident, uh, about Great River, the water increase. Who is, who's the spokesman?
Good morning.
Hello, how are you?
Good morning. Uh, I'm in East Jackson Street, and I'm a resident of Morgantown area. Along with myself, I have other residents of Morgantown. We are having to come here today, we're seeking a debt from you all to see why we are having a rising cost of our water. Uh, when I first purchased my home in Morgantown, it was with public construction. They charged us thirty-five dollars, they went up to fifty-three dollars. They sold the company to another company, which charged sixty dollars. Great River paying me and charging us, so they went up eighty-three dollars. Then it went up to ninety-two dollars. Now, presently, we are paying a hundred and seven dollars and ninety-nine cents. Everybody that is under their system, which is one of the reasons I called, they told me the response was that they are having to pay Natchez water work. The system that they bought is not working properly. The others that provide, the property used to keep the purifying of the water. So, they're paying Natchez water work, they're still paying public construction, they are paying, we are paying sewage, we are paying like a tier one, tier two, tier three. So, all these extra costs is for them to be able to get, and we are paying the cost. I don't use that much water, so it doesn't matter how much water you use, everybody in Morgantown area are being charged. It's the system, since they bought it, has not been improved. It's a contaminated system, it just don't work, if the system don't work, and we're paying Natchez out of water work, why not give them an opportunity to come in and give us a better system? Because you don't have no pressure, you always having more water work, and then on top of that, we're having to pay extra expenses to buy it, it's the water, because you can't cook with the water, it's contaminated.
Uh, I'm, I'm aware of some of these problems, I'm not aware of all of them, and I know that everywhere Great River has gone, whether it's the sewage, or the water, or whatever it is, the, the costs are way up there. And it was my understanding that they have to go before the Public Service Commission to get a rate increase, and I can't, I can't for the life of me understand how they're getting them. Uh, it's crazy.
I contacted the commission, which is Wayne Carr, I spoke with his secretary, and I have spoken with others on your roster today about this issue. Uh, I was informed that Great Rivers did contact them, and they told them no, they couldn't increase us, and they haven't. And they planning on increasing us again.
And I thought also that, uh, Adams County or Natchez Water was gonna try to take over that system, or try to buy it from them, and, and they wouldn't, wouldn't allow it, I, I guess, or wouldn't, wouldn't take the deal. Uh, so, anybody else that might know more than I know about it, I just, I'm just appalled about how much your bills are, it's just-
Yes, and, uh, and then not only just the concern for me, it's a lot of residents here today. And some of my own fixed income, I have an elderly neighbor, and once she pay her water bill, she don't have four hundred and seven dollars left. It's not, it's just ridiculous. Um, and I feel as though that although they are private-owned company, how is a private-owned company able to come here and rate us like they do?
I, I'm afraid I agree with her, but yes, sir, Mr. Gray, you go ahead.
How can the county, how can Adams County treat us, allow a company come in and to, so that they can benefit from a corrupted system that they have? A non-proper working system that's not working? So, we have to pay the cost and owe for them to build it, because they're paying Natchez water work. They paying a subcontracting company that's on our pipe bus, which we just had the issue. We are having, uh, residents have to pay three thousand dollars due to the pressure, we don't have pressure on our water. Has nothing been improved better for the better of our way of living, to feel comfortable enough to live in your home without having some war? Scared to even cook with the water? Yeah. Yeah, yes, yes.
Mr. President?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Gray.
Uh, Mr. Attorney? What role do the board of supervisors play in, in these private associations?
Yeah, we don't have any authority to regulate their pricing, they're, they are regulated by the Public Service Commission.
Okay.
That doesn't mean we haven't been complaining like-
That's all I wanted you to say. Uh, Mr. Neese, man, you talked about this, and you told me you was gonna get a petition. I encourage you to get a petition, because everybody on this board feel like it's wrong. But here go the catch. I got the attorney contacting the Public Service Commission, contacting Great River. So y'all gonna have to turn around and come back again, and all these questions y'all have, we gonna shoot them at them, because they got the answers. We don't have the answers. So Scott, where are you?
We'll follow back up. We requested them to, to, to do that. We've sent the request. They come. We've shared, shared the bills that y'all have, and want an explanation. They came up before, what, almost a year ago, when we announced our concerns with them. You know, I think your, your suggestion of, of, you know, another water system taking it over would have made a lot of sense. And we tried to push that too, and, you know, but we don't, we can't, we're not, we don't have any authority to make them do that, but it certainly makes a lot of sense. I mean, they're already using Natural Water. Why not work out something for them? But again, we can't make them do that.
Uh, Mr. Attorney, I, I contacted another public, uh, service commissioner, because he's a friend of mine. I don't even know our public service commissioner. I never met him. He just got elected. And, uh, when I called, they hooked me up to somebody else to talk to, but at the end of the day, uh, you got a middle person in there getting paid, and the only way we gonna alleviate this problem, the middle person gotta be gone.
Yeah, but not only do we have one middle person, our B L states that we have. Yeah, tell us, Sean, that is. We, we, it's. We're paying two sewers. We're paying three tier threes. We're paying two different type of water.
I got it, I got it. What you paying is, you paying the natural water work for sewage and water, because these people don't provide sewage and water. Uh, Great River is the middle. Hewitt was the middle. Uh, he kind of like started getting sewage from, uh, Natural Water Work, and then he started getting water, but then he didn't sell it to Natural, uh, Water Work. He ended up selling it to, uh, somebody else, and then Great River got it. Now, the guy across from, uh, your brother, he told me that they send y'all the bill, and they, uh, tell y'all on the bill when they gonna raise y'all water rates.
No, no.
Oh, 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 I'm just, oh, I'm just saying what he told me. Because, and we always in the city with the Natural, uh, Natural Water Work, is you gotta have a public hearing. The people got to come to the public hearing, and ain't none of that's going on with Great River in the Public Service Commission. So that's the reason, uh, I asked our attorney to reach out to the Public Service Commission, reach out to Great River, get them in here like we did last time. They was here once before, but we didn't have everybody here.
We didn't have any knowledge of this.
Well, well, this, this room was packed. It was packed, but you was here.
I was here.
Okay, it was packed, but everybody wasn't at the table. Everybody wasn't here. So what we gonna do, we gonna do the same thing again. We gonna reach out to them. When they agree to come, then we gonna reach out to y'all, and, and, and y'all gonna come and ask them the questions, because they got the answers. We don't have answers.
Okay, so even if the answer, hypothetical speaking, if they tell us that they're gonna raise our water bill again, they, it's no.
I don't even know if that's legal.
Because I contacted the commission people, once again, the secretary told me that Great River did contact them, allow an increase. In our area, they told them no, and they gonna take all the action. But they, they advised them that it wasn't supposed to went up on our bill.
So that's the reason we need them in here.
Correct, but this is why I came to the board, because seeking help, and also, Great River is paying Natural Water Work, which is a business from Natural. So how, how can they be stopped? Although they paying Natural Water Work, so you all have some type of rule code or something over Natural Water Work?
No, that's the city of.
That's the city.
This is Adams County.
But we the county.
We in the county.
So I need to go to the county?
No, no, wait, let me, let me, let me explain this to you.
I'm not understanding.
Let me explain this to you. Uh, Natural Water Works is the city of Natural.
Correct.
They bought, they are buying water and sewage for Great River, and they sending it to y'all. When, when y'all had the big pipe burst out there, okay, they cut the water off.
Correct.
But Natural Water Work didn't cut they water off. Great River cut their water off. But Natural Water Work still, water still was coming. What I'm telling you is this. I was on the board, I don't know, when David Hewitt wanted to sell his sewer to the city of Natural. Two people voted against it, and everybody else voted for it. I wasn't on that board when they decided to sell their water, because, uh, uh, it's a middle person.
Yeah, and it's a contaminated system.
Anytime, I'm in the car wash business. If, if I tell somebody, come up there and wash the car, and then I get a middle person to do it, and I'm getting all the money, and I pay the middle person, then who gonna, who gonna lose? The person that's paying the money. Even Adams County Water wearing Adams County name, but that's not affiliated with the Board of Supervisors. They just wear Adams County name. That's not, that's not our association. The city of Natural own the Natural Water Work. We don't own Adams County Water. So that's the reason I asked him to reach out to the Public Service Commission, and reach out to Great River, and bring their representatives here, where we can have this discussion all over again. I'm glad you got the petition, but I thought you was gonna wait for me to get back with you to tell you, come this day, because that's when they gonna be here.
Correction, I spoke with you months ago. I spoke with Mr. Gaines when, when the prices first start, uh, rising. They, uh, I paid my bill online. They tried to charge me double. I reached out to one gang about the, the, the increase, and how they was overcharging me. I'm like, he contacted him as well. But, uh, I think they gave us some type of bogus answer, just like they did, did me. I warned Mr. Gaines then that, they was taking extra out of my bank account, and I paid online, and they was trying to charge me double. Well, speaking to other residents, that has happened to them as well. Not only the increase, the company itself is, I don't think they realize that they bought a corrupted system, but since they bought the system and had done it, oh my, it has nothing improved. Everybody in here is hard water, is low pressure, has nothing improved for make our life better with this war. So nobody feel comfortable enough to even cook with the water, so that's extra expensive. So I spoke with you, yes, I did, that was months ago, and I was expecting you to come take me back, because that's what you told me, that you would come take me back. Since then, I spoke, I think the last time I spoke with you is when we did have the water break. And I think you said then you'll get back with me, and I told you where I was gonna continue my actions on what I was gonna do.
Ma'am, do any of y'all know how many residents are on that system?
I, I, I forget about anybody else.
I think it might be something like two hundred.
That sounds alright.
It's also a little bit of a road.
No, I think it's more than that, because I have like, oh, close to three hundred signatures, so I'm, I'm not quite, and that's not, that's not.
Well, Lower West Road, uh, it's Great, Great River is also doing the sewage out there. I don't think they're doing the water. But I, I think that y'all guys have put as much pressure with your petitions on them. Maybe you need to go to the city as well, so the city's aware of it. Uh, uh, the, the more people you get involved in this, we're concerned about it. I, I don't like seeing this at all. I mean, um, I, I, I can't imagine an increase like that. And I, you see how much social security is going up and stuff, like three percent here or whatever. Uh, I don't know how anybody makes it right now, the way this economy is and, and the inflation rate that we, we've gone through. Uh, Mr. Gaines?
So, you know, I, I would like to, uh, say this. Uh, I was a supervisor on that side, and I did, um, have several conversations with, uh, Mr. Neese about it. I did contact the Public Service Commission, uh, did set up a meeting and come here, but I, 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 I want to say this to the Morgantown residents. I don't think nobody on this board here is not supporting y'all. We are not fighting against y'all. But what I think was the misunderstanding is that, uh, it's almost, let me put it like this. We got Wal, uh, uh, we got Walmart in there. Walmart is a private owned company. And we cannot regulate the prices in Walmart. But what we will do, because it's unfair, we will support you and go out of the way. We will stand with you. We are not here to fight against you to make things not happen, because I personally did. Called and found out who was the Public Service Commission, uh, got with the attorney, had them come here, and I think, I know, uh, the lady in the back, it was about seven or eight people here that we contacted, and some people couldn't work. But this is a problem that's going forward, that we want to help you with. We not fighting against you, but when we, if it was one of our employees or something that's owned by Adams County, we have control and power to say, you can change this. But we in a situation like y'all. We are, we not trying to, we hate that it's there, because y'all are residents, but we don't even own Adams County Water. Even the fight, we want to fight with y'all, but we don't need to be fighting there. We need to go Natural Water, Public, uh, the water work, he said, let's sit down. We, 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 we will do the support to figure out what we need to do. So I would just say, uh, going forward, we need to realize that we not going against y'all. We trying to help y'all, but we can help together, but we cannot control the water bill. It's almost like one of y'all having property to sell. You put your house up for sale, and you want a hundred thousand dollars for your house. Adams County Board of Supervisors can't come back and tell you, say your house for fifty thousand dollars. And that's the only thing, I think, is the misunderstanding, that we have control. I promise you, if we had control, that we would. If we had control, I would love to see Adams County Water take it over.
Yeah, Adams County Water Corporation, Natural Water.
Natural Water.
Yeah, yeah, and I know.
So all they, it don't purify the water. That's why they having to subcontract and pay Natural City. But at the end of the day, get rid of the system. It's harmful to us, but in order for this company to make a profit, we're paying the cost, and that's not fair.
That's all they're doing is getting profit. They're really not, they're not doing anything, just, they're just the little man. And they're paying their bills, and they're, they're not doing anything extra for y'all, and as a matter of fact, they're not.
The bad thing about it is this, when you call them, they say they, they charging them extra money so they can do X, Y, Z. And they ain't doing nothing.
They got a savings account, they don't do it eventually. I don't believe that either.
I inherited y'all in January, and the thing is, I was working with Supervisor Gaines on this. That's the reason I know so much about it. But they had an election. They got a new Public Service Commission. That, he wasn't there the last time. He knew. That's why we trying to get him here.
Get him back.
But when I first bought my home, not to cut you off, you was the supervisor then, and I asked you about it. Mr. Gray, you.
I just got here in January.
No, when I bought my house in two thousand and seven, you was.
I wasn't even over there. I was in the city then.
Okay, well, I spoke with you about when Hewitt had, and you said that like, it was like Godfather Eve. And I was like, no, something could be done, because he was paying daughter leave, but it wasn't.
That don't mean, I, I never, I voted against Hewitt doing what he did when I was with the city.
Yes.
I just got over here.
I spoke with you when I bought the house.
I just got over here in sixteen.
Yeah.
And I just started representing this area in twen, what, last, January, last January.
Yeah, you might not been a supervisor, or supervisor, but you was in position. So I was, I was asking and seeking then how we could get help out here in Morgantown. Because when we speak to certain, if we speak to someone in the city, they'll say, oh, y'all the county, y'all the county. They treat us like we're not even citizens of Natural. It always, y'all the county. Uh, if you come to Morgantown on Brooklyn at night, it's P O D black dog. I spoke with you about that. You said that the residents have to, uh, purchase their own light. But it should be some type of help that we can get for us, even with the light. But the most important part that I'm here today is about the water.
Have, have you been to the city of Natural? Have you been to the Board of Alderman?
No.
I want to see y'all put, I, I understand, but the more, the more you get this out there, and that press is involved, the more you get it out there, and the more time, you can come in here once every, once a month, and give us an update, and we'll give you an update. But, but, you know, it, it has to stay on the forefront, and, 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 and so somebody would want to do something about it. Because you put enough heat on somebody, they will eventually do what they need to do, especially when they're doing the wrong thing, which is exactly what's happened to all of you out there.
Mr. President, I'm gonna be honest with you. If I lived in Morgantown, and I caught three on my side, everybody would know about this. The whole state of Mississippi would know about this. It need to be exposed. I can't expose it, because I don't live out there. Three on my side need to come out there, and, and just like you talking to us, y'all need to be talking to three on my side, where everybody know if it's wrong, then everybody gonna know it's wrong, and then they can do something about it. Because we can't do nothing about it.
It's, it's new to us. That's why we're coming here to seek answers. We don't have the answer to every question that we are asking. That's why we are here to try to get help and knowledge from you all, because we're just taking the first step as to come here, for the help, and for the good advice. But at the end of the day, when all boil down, we're being raped with these prices.
And all of us agree.
Did you, uh, go to the Public Service Commission website and file a complaint?
I would try to do that.
They got a website especially for that, and it's like any other agency. If you file a complaint, somebody has to come see about it. Um.
Okay.
That's, that's the way the government's supposed to work. So if y'all go to that website, you file a complaint, a detailed complaint, of what all your different grievances are, list them out, and they'll have to come down. Somebody needs to give you some answers. And I would love for you to come back when you get a few answers, or if we get an update, certainly somebody will call you. But, um, I'm, I'm sorry if y'all's, uh, problems out there.
I think the best way to do it.
I lived out there myself.
Is let them come here. Where everybody can hear what they saying, because if, if they come out there, they gonna meet with two or three people. We need to get everybody here, let them come here, and let them explain everything to everybody up here, not out there. Everybody ain't gonna be in nobody's house.
Alright, Mr. Gaines.
Yeah, and, uh, speaking on that, um, back to what, um, the President Wilson said, you know, we gonna fight together, but if y'all find that website, the way y'all came in unison, I would suggest that you file a complaint in unison. You got, I know everybody might not know how to type it. Some people, I would suggest that not just one person file a complaint, several residents file a complaint, because no matter what people say, we can talk all we want. Paperwork is documentation. You need to put the documentation, have a strong documentation, because when we was here last time, when I was a supervisor, we got in touch, we called a guy right here, and he was here, and everything that, the few people was here, they said that they had no knowledge of. Uh, I think, I noticed, uh, lady back there, she was here, they had no knowledge this was going on. They had no knowledge this was going on. But if you right now, get in the right direction, start putting it on paper, find the, find the website, complain to them, because that's who gonna, uh, actually gonna make a change. And what I would do, even though I am not the supervisor on that side, uh, I started, and I will try to be there to help bag y'all up. I know if there's something come to a vote, if, if it's board, that y'all have my support, because I'm definitely not against the resident. I'm for the resident, but when you fight, you got to fight in the, the right area. You got to fight the right person. And I think we could do it together, but, uh, if, if from now on, when we come, let's just try to work it together, and see can we get y'all some relief, because you do need some relief.
Yes.
Can I say something?
Yes.
I went on the website.
Can you tell us what your name is?
Um, Robert.
You can stand, if you'll stand up.
Here go your back right here.
You don't have to go.
You go to Nick.
Yeah, I did. I sent you an email, uh, what I sent him, and I'm sending a follow-up to him. I sent it that Saturday. But I went on the website, and I filed a complaint. A woman named Karen, I got poison over, she called me right back, and, uh, within a day. And she told me that, number one, they were denied. And she told me that number one, they were denied the rate increase and that they took out a bomb. And went ahead with it anyways, I don't know anything about that, how that stuff works. But she told me that keep an eye on the docket, when it comes up on her docket. And also, I told her nothing was getting done with the old system. And she said, you can requ- request what actual work they are doing. I sent him an email on the ninth asking what work they're doing, they never answered me. Sent an email again requesting a follow up on that and I haven't heard nothing yet on it. And I don't think I'm gonna hear anything and I can send you the email again if you want, um. But that's pretty much what the, uh, Service Commission told me. And, uh, like I said, I sent on the website, she coming back real fast, so.
Oh, if they denied a, a increase and they did it anyway, I would think that they would have some, some liability there. Uh, Mr. Middleton, did you set time something?
Yeah, whether Great River made a bad decision, a poor decision, or can't keep their head above water, no pun intended. That's not the responsibility of the residents of Morgantown Road to fund the mistakes that they make or they can't pay for. So like everyone stated here, we really don't have any control, but what we can do is we can stand behind you, we can support you. If there's a letter that needs to be sent on behalf of the board by our attorney, everybody at this table, I feel confident we'll sign that letter. And we'll fight to do whatever we can to help, we know they're not holding up their end of the deal.
Correct.
But we gotta work together here, don't, don't think anybody up here is against y'all, because we're not.
And, and one more thing, Denise, before you leave, you stating about this, because Mr. Rob would send something to, to, to the Senator.
He been working with.
I mean, it ain't like they don't know either.
Yeah, and I sent to Cindy Hyde Smith and Benny Thompson, an email saying what's going on. Which I figured they were gonna tell me, call the Service Commission, I just wanted them to know. And both of them contacted me back, so.
Well, uh, Benny Thompson actually has a representative here in, in Adams County and, and it would. He just started, so it might be a good idea to go ahead and let him know, uh, what's going on, so he can run it up the chain.
He just sent me an email back saying, call the Service Commission, but because he told me it's nothing to do with him.
No.
Uh, same thing with Cindy Hyde Smith.
Now, we, we had a situation out sixty-one south, I might not mention the exact spot, but every time a resident complained, they went and shut their water off. So if any of y'all are doing anything and, and there's some kind of retaliatory thing going on, like that guy was doing, you know, that's, that's pretty much criminal. Go ahead, Mr. Gray.
I, I, I just want to say that, uh, I, I still think it best for, for them to come here. Because if, if they don't come here.
I would keep advising the residents of Morgantown to attend the meetings or to support us along with the other residents to come. But, um, like Mr. Wilson said, or not Mr. Middleton, if you all can get that letter prepared and signed. So we can, uh, have that personally just on us when we go to other officials for help, it will be highly appreciated.
Can we write a letter in support of, uh, okay? Do we need to make a motion too?
Uh, I need to know me personally, because, uh, I, me and him been working on this for a while, man. And it's been over a couple of months and, and if, if, if you sending them something and they not responding, then we need to do something different. Because, I mean, I, I can't call three on my side about that, to let them come here and let them know we responding to these people. And the Public Service Commission and Great River, and they not responding back, maybe they can reach out to them and find out why they not responding back. Because me and him been working on this for some months.
And I'm, and I'm so overwhelmed to hear you.
Do, do you need a motion to write a letter and send it off, Scott?
I don't need that, I mean, y'all, we've already been doing it and we can have that.
Okay, well, thank y'all for coming today and, 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 uh, so you came in, in with a lot of support, so. It's, it's good to see y'all, I wish it was under better circumstances, however, hopefully it will be next time.
Man.
Hey, hold on, go ahead, Robert, about the lights.
You had mentioned that some residents had some bills, high bills here in the last several months, or repairing bills like.
Yes.
The line, you said somebody paid three thousand dollars had their line replaced.
Yes, when Natchez, uh, heating and cooling, two wins, like, uh, Mr. Gray said. When Great River cut the water off because we had a break, Natchez Water Works was still pressing and pushing their water through. So the pressure was turned up high, so it cost a lot of residents out there for busted pipes, hot water tank. And they done had a lot of repairs, they all stood a while.
On Second Street, I know here about a month ago, me and Mr. Gray was out there riding, I went several doors and visited with some people. It was two, one of them I went to and talked to him and I called the company, the own part owner of the company, talked to him, he told me what happened. And it was down below Brookfield where the valves tie in where, uh, Mark City and Natchez ties into Hoover. And, uh, pressure valve went bad, so it put too much pressure towards the houses, so I asked him what they responsible for it at the time. Me and Mr. Gray was out riding and he said they need to call in, so I told the residents that I seen water running out to the road. That they might want to contact the company and see if they would pay for the repairs.
Great river.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sure, I'm sure they denied everybody. Yeah, well, they might have denied everybody.
It was on my side and I told my understanding was on, I, I don't have a problem paying anything that's our problem. I have a problem when the pressure is so strong and all three of our houses, water was just busting everywhere. And I had to pay over seven hundred dollars, I got my receipt and, you know, that's the problem we have, we have no problem paying what we need to pay.
I spoke with you too about it, told, when he told me.
Well, if they damaged people's equipment, they should be responsible for it, I would think, so.
It's a lot.
I would save your receipt, this, this, this is, this is kind of just starting actually, even though you, you've been involved for a long time, but this is just starting. You really, you've got a drum up support with the Public Service Commission, you got our support, getting, getting Natchez, if, if you can't get the mayor involved. Uh, and, and, and keep it moving and, and don't let up.
No, we can't, they plan on going up again on that water. January, they saying like three or four dollars might drop, but they plan on going up again, so who's to say, we're paying a hundred and seven dollars in Natchez. One cent for a hundred and eight dollars, they might go up a hundred and thirty, a hundred and fifty. It's just entirely too much when you don't even use that much water.
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, you live by yourself, you don't use a hundred and seventy dollars.
You, you're right. All right, well, thank y'all for coming today and you got our support, we'll, we'll get a letter generated, thank y'all again.
Rick, if, uh, if I get ready, can you call me and thank y'all so much.
Yes, ma'am. They not defending this territory. All right, city government business if any, no city government business, departmental reports. Yes, you may go first, young lady. What are you, okay, go ahead, I didn't see you getting up, Miss Nanette.
Good morning.
Morning.
And that's Ben from Adams County, this side.
Go ahead.
The number I have to add from September the first, two, six, ten. Natchez P D S six hundred and twenty, Natchez Friday Report had seven, Adams County N S O had two hundred and twenty-two.
Okay.
Also, I have, um, a wage form for Sarah Davis, uh, ship captain.
Go ahead.
Uh, see now.
What's that now?
Sarah Davis, a change of, of pay, uh, for ship captain. Actually, it was submitted in October two thousand and three, I don't know what happened, whether approved or not, but I keep calling the president. And she said she's not here today, so I'm presenting it again today.
Okay, uh, do we have, we have checked this if it has already been put through the system before we read?
Yeah.
Okay, do you have something else while you're, while they're looking that up?
That's it.
Okay, if, um, they don't find this, I'll call it out and we'll, we'll vote on it again.
Yeah, they probably bring this shit up.
They're looking up it.
They'll talk to page and, and, and we'll straight get them to see how long they got.
Sarah Davis should be updated to what now?
Here, I'll call it out, we'll just go ahead.
Yeah, it's a, she's a.
Just in case it fell through the cracks, Sarah Davis, um. Rate change from twelve sixty to thirteen sixty, ship captain, um, twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars annual. I need a motion to approve this increase.
Some more.
Moved by Ms. Gray, seconded by Ms. Hutchins, any discussion, all in favor? Any nays, motion carried. Thank you. Alan, this bid open, is that a ti- is it timestamped at ten o'clock or?
It, it is, we only have one bid, same guy that bid last time, so I'm, I'm working on rush.
Okay, so I'll look.
That's fine.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure that the time constraint.
It is fine.
We'll let you go, then he can.
Mary K. Gordy, uh, Adams County George, I have in your envelope to sign a seventy thousand dollar grant we received from the Department of Public Safety and Planning. And it goes under Fund One Thirty-two.
You, you read this book?
Yes, there's lots of places to sign, I've marked them all, um, it may take you a little while, have fun.
All right, I need a motion to sign this, uh, grant. Moved by Mr. Gaines, seconded by Mr. Middleton, any discussion, all in favor? All right, any nays? Motion carried.
I'll get the original back from, uh, Ms. Page when she get done, thank you, that's all I have.
I think it's ready to go, she, she can, y'all can look it over and, and you, and you can tell me if it's correct or not. All right, Ms. Claire, all right.
All right, just was for the Adams County Home, we're gonna save the whole corporation, we had a rebid. We only received one bid last time, we only received one bid, first time we could rebid it, we received one bid, second time we'll find, we can, we can roll with it. We only received one bid, again, and it's Caesar Cobb, Cobb Construction. I'll look at this, it'll write it down, hopefully he knows it per house. All right, so for, he's bid per home, and this will start with Lucy Smith. This bid is a total of forty-seven thousand, uh, fifty dollars. She is the lone rehab, she is a stick home, brick home, so it's just some rehabilitation to the house. The other three homeowners are all, uh, manufactured home replacements. I'll go to Malita Pickett. And his total bid is a one hundred and five thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars. John Thompson. A hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred dollars. And I'll say this, there, there's some variances here with this, uh, all, you know, these are all three manufactured homes. Like a John Thompson's house, this, this trailer was behind another home, there's going to be a tree to be removed and then replaced it, so there's. That's one reason there's a little bit of difference in pricing, all right, Barbara Smith. A hundred and five, uh, a hundred and five thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars. And I'll say this, uh, we've worked with Caesar Cobb before and past, other projects is good. So I have no, I have no issues at all with working with him, he's very familiar with home project, he's been working with this program since it was with the city developer for, so. And these bids all seem to be, I wasn't sure how it was gonna work as far as being an open bid, I thought all would be pledged and all leave, so we should be good.
Do we need to sign it, yes?
Yeah, if you don't mind, sign it and go ahead and, if y'all are okay with all that, go ahead and vote on it, to, to move for it with Caesar Cobb.
Do you need to toe a, uh, that's fine since you got one?
Yeah.
You don't need it.
Nah, that's fine. Sign it, the bottom sign, you know, you voted for it.
Okay, I need a motion to approve motion, uh, Ms. Hutchins, seconded by Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any nays, motion carried.
All right, that's all I got, I can get this back and go off y'all line.
How, how much money do we have for the total project?
Well, I'll tell you what I'd like to do, I really, this is better than that, and I'll tell you what the. Well, for the Pope, it basically happened again for the entire project, but we had one homeowner, uh, withdraw, we had five homeowners, one was true.
Okay.
So it's down to four homeowners, so we can't use all that money, but for instance, on Sioux Weatherstone. Uh, the construction maximum was fifty-nine thousand, uh, fifty-nine, one fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. And on all three of the trailers, uh, the maximum allowable amount for construction was a hundred and six thousand, five hundred and eighty-three dollars. And he's just on the budget on all of those, that's, that's fantastic.
Y'all, y'all through with your, uh?
With it.
All right, do you have anything else?
That's it.
Okay.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Can we go make a call before you real quick? All right, departmental reports, same thing, come on.
So it's a paramedic, you know, I have to, I have to do a lot of different diverse things today, I was an emotional support medic. Brad's team took such a whooping.
Well, we got another Ricky Graves over, he's been crying all morning.
You know, it's, it's one of the few roles as a medic that I have to do, but I'll pay on record.
I'll let you my forehead.
We had a total of nine hundred and seventy-three requests in August, uh, three hundred and sixty-six of those come nine to one proper. Two hundred and fifty-eight transports, seventy percent transport rate on those, staying about where we're at right now. Uh, probably ones nine minutes, eleven seconds, eighty-nine percent. And the city county is sixteen forty-three at eighty-nine percent. We're looking at forty patients responding to with treatment or no treatment, no transport period, they refused. Thirteen no patient bound calls and then twenty-eight canceled prior to arrival. We continue to see a heightened site call volume at twenty-one for August, uh, and then again, a hundred and eighty-six multiple calls at the same timeline, taking place. Increase in medical flights from the field, uh, we went up from three last month to five this month. Uh, we continue to, to do the hiring thing in the market where we're continuing to, uh, to hire those people and pushing through and we're being pretty successful with it. We have, I actually had three more interviews, uh, last week and we'll be putting those through the hire process and orientation next week. Board have any questions for me?
I don't believe, appreciate you, uh, thank you for your extra service today.
Very good, thank you.
Please yell them in.
Yeah, I have a party out there.
Hey.
I have two things, uh, I'm a question to prove for, first they need, um, travel to the L C Association Ball Conference. Uh, October twenty-seventh to October thirty-first.
Okay, uh, do you have paperwork here? Okay, uh, do you have paperwork here?
Uh, I sent it to Cory, I sent you.
Okay, I'm just, for, uh, let's see if I see the name right here. This for you, just you?
Yeah, this is just me.
Okay. I had a request, uh, I need a motion.
Some of them.
Moved by, was that Mr. Gaines, and then Ms. Hutchins second? All right, any discussion? All in favor? Any needs? Motion carried.
All right, and the second thing is, me and Shirley Emery, we completed our certification, um, through the Mystic Estates University Extension Program. Um, where after we get our certification, there's a two thousand dollar increase on both of our salaries, uh, right about the state, I think, from the State Hospital or something like that. Um, I provided the documentation on it. Uh, ECO T becomes effective October, March of two thousand and twenty-four.
And is there, is there something we've gotta make a motion on? I haven't, oh, and you say you sent the paperwork?
I did, I sent the paperwork, good answer.
Did you email it to her, or did you?
Uh, brother, I gave it to Cory.
Oh, it might have been something she stuck in here, and I, I didn't see exactly where she, that landed. Reorganized.
I have a copy, do you need that?
That mic? All right, I just found it.
Okay, okay.
That's Shirley Emery.
Shirley Emery, is that?
And Terrence Baylen. Oh, I need a motion to spread this across the minutes. Moved by Ms. Hutchins.
Sir.
Second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any needs? Motion carried.
Thank you, I got it ready.
Thank you.
Go on, boy.
On this.
I got a couple things, boy. Uh, first thing, uh, give you update on Professor Francine. We did have two properties that sustained some damage, uh, and we were able to get those individual tars. They did have insurance, uh, it was trees that fell on both properties, uh, but we were able to get them tars. So that's only reported damage that we got from, uh, the tropical storm. I think we did a couple trees down the county, wrote a farm, we didn't have much, uh, thing on these kind of ships at the last minute, so we was kind of blessed on that. So at that point, I asked the board, we go and close out our version declaration that the president had signed.
Okay, need a, a motion to close out the declaration on Francine. Moved by Mr. Middleton, second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any needs? Motion carried.
Yes, it was President.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Gray.
No, boy.
More trouble.
See, uh, I guess cotton dry. Did we find anyone, Miss Stephanie? Contractor called me and the homeowner called me. That's EWP, the one, we're shooting on the one, EWP twenty, some thousand dollars, they let me drop me on top to, well, I texted her Friday. So we had a board meeting today, I mean, a board meeting today, I would find out if any updates on the contractor.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'm gonna say this, uh, this is September the, uh, sixteen. I'm hoping and praying that this project can, can wait until the new budget, because, uh, we at the end of the budget and, 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 and she requested that no one kind of spend unnecessary money. I'm not saying it's not necessary, but to me, it would be better to wait till October the first, when the new budget cycle come, instead of trying to find some money at the end of the budget. Does that make sense?
It makes sense if, I mean, he's, the first payment's not gonna be until after the beginning of the fiscal year too. I'm, I'm not disagreeing with you, but I'm thinking if you're gonna go forward with the project.
Can it wait?
Every rainfall, it's gonna get worse, but I mean, yeah, I guess it can wait. I mean, if the world wants it to wait, it can wait. I just hope it's the same cost of what it is now. If it's not any worse or anything like.
Well, when you say wait, I mean, the, the first payment would be like a month or two months away, probably, like.
Yeah, it'd be after the fiscal year.
Okay.
Be in the fiscal year.
So if they started tomorrow, it wouldn't, it wouldn't go on this, would it?
Out of this budget, or will they be axing?
No, it's gotta be after the budget, 'cause even if he, even if he did.
Well, I would not want to have the budget, because we don't have another meeting.
It wouldn't matter one way or the other. Definitely have to come after.
Yeah. We don't have another meeting till October.
But I don't know if there's any, what the cash balance is or all that, I don't know.
Our original discussion on this, correct me if I'm wrong, Robbie, I believe we talked about using offer funds. If we had to.
You did.
Not I, we.
Yeah, well, I was talking about the forty, I, I mean, that's what I mean.
What's, what's the cost?
Forty something.
Forty, two to forty-eight, I don't have it right.
Yeah, we're gonna have to do it.
Yeah.
It's failed.
So, yeah, we, we need to go ahead and get started on, you need a, we don't need a motion to do that, we've already proved it, right?
Okay, but I just, you know, I had to give it okay, because we had mentioned about money, we've given her an opportunity, or whatever, or whatever, you know?
Okay.
An opportunity to, to discuss what we would do.
We need to go ahead and start it.
So, Miss Stephanie? Yeah, uh, I know it's terrible, and that's why they're gonna look at it, it's, but you can get it through the offer fund.
I'm not, I'm not sure, I'm not sure.
Okay, we, we know, we're, we're gonna do it, and we're gonna, we'll find the money. One way or the other.
And I can say this to, I can say this to, it was forty thousand set aside in offer money for Deerfield, a project that was gonna happen in Deerfield, uh, with the water lines and everything, that project is not gonna take place, so that forty thousand can be used for.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Uh, last board meeting, we discussed vehicles, anything over twenty-twelve or any vehicles over that, we're gonna take them off of both covers, gotta put them on liability. We've got the Corvette, we had a few, uh, we have, uh, got those down, you know, for liability insurance, and, but, we've worked with her, plus we've got about four or five solid pieces that we're gonna put on, uh, go up there, so we're just working on the verbal magic and the title and things like that.
I laughed because you said you got with Corvette, I thought you said we got a Corvette.
No.
I got that, I got that too. What y'all doing with a Corvette, but it, it only took me a second to figure out who we, what we were talking about.
Well, you know, y'all had a first meeting, just trying to cook, you know, figure out how to do it, and stuff, so we working on it, so I know Sherri's calling, been doing it too. Um, President Wilson, you have a tire grant up there for you for two thousand thirty-two dollars, request for payment, you need to sign, please.
Do you also have somebody, your, a rehire or a new hire?
Yeah, I got this here.
Okay, that's, that's what I had out, it didn't happen.
Okay, well, you want to do that?
I did see those earlier. Uh, no, we gotta do it all, so, let's just find out where, where they ended up. All right, waste tire collection?
Yeah, two thousand thirty-two dollars, request for payment, what we gonna ask for. And then I got another waste tire and solid waste application for fifty thousand, total getting messed up.
Okay. Uh, motion on the first, the two thousand thirty-two dollar tire grant. Moved by Mr. Middleton, second by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any needs? Motion carried.
Then the other applications, a waste tire and solid waste grant, combined together for fifty thousand, it's application, you have to sign, President Wilson.
Are the two different, one twenty-five thousand each, or?
Uh, I think they all broke down, it equals up to fifty thousand.
All right, waste tire, waste tire grant and GQ, so, okay, two separate ones, run them together, need a motion. Moved by Ms. Hutchins, second by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion? All in favor? Any needs? Motion carried. Uh, what else you got, Robbie?
Uh, then I got the new hire, Mr. Johnson, uh, he'll start September eighteenth, at the rate of thirteen, I think, an hour, and after six months ago, fourteen fifty.
Okay, that's, that carries Earl Johnson.
Correct.
Uh, thirteen fifty an hour, starting twenty-eight thousand eighty dollars.
And he's got fourteen fifty after six months.
Okay. Uh, moved by Mr. Middleton, second by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion?
Yeah, we had someone that.
Yes, ma'am, that's just a, yes, ma'am, I still have a lot of positions up there too, so.
Okay.
All right, all in favor? Any needs? Motion carried.
Um, from, uh, President Wilson, it's a, either it was on site on Greenwood Avenue. It's a picture up there, I'd like, we'll give permission to, to leave it on site on there.
You say there's a picture up here?
Yeah.
All right, yeah, I might have sent them. No, see if, did, you put it in the folder, or?
I just put it right there, literally, when you, when you were looking on here, so I just put it right there.
Okay, yeah, we're stuck with the cowboy fans, just left their.
So.
Greenwood Road. Motion by Mr. Gray.
Sir.
Second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? Any needs? Motion carried.
Last thing I have is Meg closed the, uh, bush and shove, that Warner Storm, Langers and Hangers out, and she signed it, and presented this challenge, so we're closed out on that. And like you said, everybody emailed, so that's all I have.
Uh, anybody got anything for, uh?
Did you need, did you need a notice to let them start work?
Yeah, come out of.
You've stopped me dry?
Yeah, I did, come out.
So, Robbie, uh, have we, uh, come to any kind of conclusion with the, uh, energy remark?
Well, I'm glad you brought that up, I just spoke with, uh, Mr. Ford about that in the back. Uh, I, I talked to Tommy Smith, which is the contractor that, uh, Bill Johnson spoke with about, uh, removing some of the trees or debris away from power lines for Dozier, that's gonna live for Moreton Town Road. And, uh, you know, it's a price of twenty-seven thousand dollars, and we went to the meeting and everything, so I called the tree contractor, met with him. And it's four trees that he's concerned with right there, also, right there at Maple, right there before we get to Red Luke Road on that hill right there. Uh, I have not, not much to do with him, but the three of the trees, back, if that's only four that's in danger of him doing his thing, and that's what he told me. Uh, I feel like that cost would be way down, but interest is still just, I helped him twice, and he's just to charge the county, just to say. So, uh, I spoke with Mr. Slower about it, uh, like I said, I spoke with, uh, I have Mr. Ford this morning about this whole tree, so it could possibly be a right, it's something where it should be a charge. I said, we've got all the railways events that we have, and, you know, I don't think it changed, ten, fifteen years ago, it wasn't an issue.
He said it wasn't, it wasn't in the contract, or it wasn't part of the bid?
Uh, it's something that they supposed to be doing anyway.
It's, it's, Kevin, it's where the railways, and they're supposed to have ten, fifteen foot clearance off of the hot lines or wherever, and that's what Tommy said, I don't have a hot, you know, to work like that, that much of the line, so, but I wish, uh, they need to keep them front and back, and then he would remove the rest, but, um, you know, interest is sitting there doing what they're supposed to do.
Did, did, did you talk to him? And he's got, you got nowhere with him either?
I, I had even mentioned to him that I said, we probably might, if I'm involved higher up, but he said, well, it's gonna come right back to me.
At the end of the day, man, we need to move forward, uh, it ain't four trees, it ain't gonna be twenty-seven thousand dollars, so we need to hold ourselves, we need to just move forward.
But I would say, and, and as Mr. Gaines spoke, it was some money put aside for some unforeseen things on the project, so it was there too, but I'm not giving a crowd, I'm just gonna be a four tree, be nowhere before twenty-seven thousand.
All they, all they doing is dropping them, or they having to drop them in all?
They just gonna throw them back, interest you go, and then, then the rest will be dropped by the contractor.
Okay, uh, so do you have a couple people you can get bids from pretty quick and?
Well, that's, it really, the contractor, contractor's got it, it's not gonna be on, but us, the contractor, which is Mr. Johnson, Dozier, uh, and I think Mr. Ford's gonna present, y'all, when they're gonna get kicked out and started, so that should be some of the first things they do, is scrubbing and, you know, so clear.
Yeah, but he's gonna charge extra back to the?
Didn't say, yeah, he isn't or ain't, but he shouldn't, I mean, he's got it in his contract.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, uh, I was on up to Kingston Road last weekend, it was pretty rough, a lot of potholes in it.
Oh, for Kingston?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you have something else, Ms. Gaines?
No, I just get the, I get.
Oh, okay, thank you, uh, Robbie. Ford, how you doing today?
Going well, um, I don't have anything but just updates and one, uh, contingent request. Um, striking project, uh, was supposed to start last week, you know, due to the weather, they didn't wanna get started. So they will start tomorrow, um, they will be complete by Friday. Um, that's the plan, that's what I was talking about on Friday, so again, they'll be starting in the morning, and should be completed by Friday. Um, Moreton Town Road, uh, probably contracted this morning, they're still coordinating with the contractor, uh, concrete supplier. Um, they said a good time that they think they can get started on Moreton Town Road, in the middle of October. They only say they can get started. And of course, they're gonna start at, uh, Dixie Road and move, go up to Bayou. And the last thing I have is a, I received a utility permit request from the Anna County Water Association, I know they have to go by chance to refer, they sent it to me, and I want to have a ten and approval pending their permit processes, follow the payment and everything, for, they want to install four inch water mains along Highway eighty-four. And they have to cross on the road to locations, in order to tie to existing, um, sites. And that's all I've seen, contingent approval for that, uh, utility permit.
Oh, okay, oh, we don't have to worry about them, they're not going anywhere, are they? Okay, moved by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion? All in favor? Any needs? Motion carried. Uh, Ms. Ford, I was gonna tell you, you mentioned Dixie Drive, on that, that corner on Dixie Drive, when you pull in there to the right, that first two acres and those buildings there. So if they need to park anything there on that two acres, and, and behind those buildings or whatever, they're, they're welcome to do that.
Uh, is, any reason? What was the reason they couldn't start on the first, and now it's in the middle of the month?
So what they're gonna do is they're gonna put up trap control when they get started, and they don't wanna go in, set up trap control, do clearing, and in their boxes, that they, how they starting the project, don't come in, so the project is a seamless stack, and, and they got all the traffic signs up, so they want to be able to, once they come in, the project is just moving forward from there. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Ford?
I did, will you please email me their request for that permit?
Yes, I'm gonna email it to you.
Okay.
You're gonna have it drawn and put in.
Perfect, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Well, I appreciate you.
Okay.
You too.
Who's next? Hello? You got anything for us?
No, sir.
You need to come more often.
Yeah, you tell, you tell the rest of the guys to stay where they at, and you come from now on.
Just tell me, send me from now on.
That, that was a great phrase this morning, and we're, we're gonna move on.
Yes, sir.
No more departmental reports. Uh, public comments, nobody here for public comments. All right, set a reset, I think we had to do one other thing, uh, round the table, Mr. Gray.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, um, I don't know, man. I don't know, man, it, it, it's just this negative feeling going around this country, just as crazy as it could be. Uh, I was watching the news and saw what happened to Tyree Hill, wide receiver from Miami Dolphins, on his way to a game, was pulled over by, uh, the police, and, uh, it's really disturbing to see how the police handled that situation, and I always thought a trained officer's job was to deescalate a situation, but seemed like they added to the situation, and, and, and now gonna be a little trouble behind all that. And, and I got a letter, a package from a Jawan Brookings that live in Adams County, was arrested and unarrested, and I'm, I'm, I still don't understand that, how you can get arrested and unarrested, and everything tore up like it never did happen. Uh, that's my first time in the history, uh, of being part of anything going that something like that could take place. Uh, even though the sheriff is not here, and I know that we sent our people everywhere we can send them to get all the training that they can get, and I hope we continue to, even if they knew and already certified, to make sure that they, uh, know the Adams County way, the way we do things over here is not like you probably did wherever else you worked, because I'm one hundred percent with the police, but, uh, we got bad apples in everything we do, and sometimes, you know, even, uh, I'm, I'm guilty of this, when I was with the city, sometime we allow somebody to resign from a job, knowing that it was a bad person, and they end up going, getting a job somewhere else and continue that same kind of behavior on the next job that they have, so, uh, we gotta be real careful with that. I wanna congratulate, uh, Louis Davis from the City of Natchez for, uh, getting the transportation director's position, booked in there wild, and, uh, think he's gonna do a great job. And, uh, we had a shooting over on Georgia West where a young lady lost her life. Um, uh, it's just crazy, I mean, it was a high school kid, and, um, I don't know, I mean, it's happening all over, they had a fourteen year old somewhere else just went crazy. Uh, I don't have an answer, but something gotta be done with all these guns that we have, uh, out in these communities. I wanna congratulate, um, a former employee of Adams County, no, let me beg up, and, uh, I know everybody's seen on the news where the former president was on his way to an event, and, 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 and they got another person with a gun, and I, I just don't understand what's going on, I mean, whatever's going on in this world, we sure can't shoot our way out of, we gotta, we gotta have something better going on than that, with somebody gonna take somebody's life, that don't even make sense. I don't care how bad you may think a person is, I don't understand why you wanna take their life, that, that just don't make sense to me. Uh, congratulations goes out to our former assistant, um, where was it, Zadye Hopkins? Purchasing, uh, he's the, uh, new field, case managing field director for Congressman Thompson, so I guess that's the reason he was resigning his job, go get that job. And I saw what it had a groundbreaking, a ribbon cutting for a new engineering company, Neil Schaefer, opens in Natchez, and, uh, they got some familiar names working for them, everybody familiar with Doug Winley and, uh, Wesley, she's a Riley now, but she was a Calaway, and still have on here about the Great River problem, so Scott, we need to do whatever we do, and, uh, see what they come on in here, and, and with, uh, our Public Service Commission, seem like, uh, he's, we own the job, and we got all these problems, seem like he wanna come down here and, 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 and talk to the people, see can we, uh, reach out to them. Still have some concerns, uh, one young man, uh, I was getting lunch sudden, and he upset about, and he got a right to be, he said, uh, about the new field, how good it look out there, and, and, and he can't believe that we letting everybody use the field for free. Uh, we need a lease agreement before baseball season start, and, uh, we need to go on, get that in place. And Scott, if you can, give me a list of the lawsuits filed against, uh, Adams County in the last five years. I need a list.
Do we have a working parameter, Ricky, on what we're gonna do about the baseball field and the feed collection, and do we have a working idea of what we're gonna do and charge?
I mean, we, we need to set up fees for, for everybody using the field, I mean, with the financial situation that this county in, we can't afford to let nobody do nothing for free.
No, we have to go clean it up, we have to turn the lights on, water, uh, Wes, do you have anything along those lines? I hate to break up your, uh, I just, while you got it in everybody's heads, we gotta have some idea what we're gonna do there.
Well, I think there's a little more to it, uh, that, that needs to be discussed, I think maybe this conversation needs to be had with Johnny, as to what goes on out there on a weekly basis. Um, I, for one, I've talked to Johnny, uh, I don't know, a month or two ago, um, about some fertilizer, I know for a fact that Tom Grandin with Cathedral is going out there three days a week cutting the grass, so there's some expense there that's gotta be considered, uh, 'cause they're hauling a mower from Cathedral School, that belongs to Cathedral School, and cutting the grass three days a week. So, there's just a lot of things we gotta look at, that, that's a big expense, uh, and if you want to pay somebody to go out there and cut it three days a week, 'cause that's why the field looks so good right now.
Uh, with, I, I agree.
I just want everybody to know...
If they doing any kind of service, they need to be compensated for the any kind of service, I agree with that one hundred percent, but at the end of the day, we just need something in place...
Dollars, damn.
Where, uh, like, we got all our other facilities and all our buildings, and y'all need to work with, with the county administrator since some of that is part of her duties.
Okay, go, go ahead.
Well, it's just, just a tough situation.
Yeah.
Because, because the house been used in the past by those two schools, it just makes it really hard, we gotta figure out what works best, I proposed something last year, might, we need to revisit that, get them to each cell, figure out what that footage is on that fence, get them to each cell, ten signs that, that we decide what they look like, okay? And, and that's their payment on using the field, instead of them having to come up with money.
Well...
Because I've told you before, when you have forty-five people show up to a Natchez High Baseball game, they can't afford to pay the officials and pay them on the field, I mean, they just can't, I mean, same way with Cathedral, it's just, we, we gotta put our heads to get them to figure out the best thing to...
You sound like...
For everybody.
Get, get some...
It's all I'm trying to do.
Advertise it out there.
Well, I mean, I, 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 I've been part of Cathedral family, it's easy for Cathedral to go out and get our county sponsors, but they just not jumping off to be sponsors for the public school like they are for Cathedral. Uh, uh, ma- maybe they will, I mean, I, I just, we need, we need to discuss it, just bring it up, and we need to have a discussion where, uh, we can have some kind of fee. Let me say this. We have a process in place dealing with everything we do as a board, and we vote on it, and we win some, we lose some. I'm just gonna say this, and it need to be said, and I'm saying it out of love, because... I'm gonna say with this garbage bill. It ain't where it need to be, but I just think when we criticize people publicly, it's just my opinion, we giving, we encouraging our residents not to pay their garbage bill. And when you don't pay the garbage bill, that's, that's a loser, county losing and the residents losing, because, uh, I, I, I'm just gonna say it, uh, every bill that I have to pay, when I don't pay it on time, there's penalties, and if you don't pay garbage on time, it's gonna have to be a penalty, and if the people that's responsible for picking up the garbage, if they don't pick it up on time, then it could be a penalty. I looked at a website, I don't know if it's Brookhaven, they got something online, every time, uh, they tell you where the pickups are, and when it's not picked up the day it's supposed to be picked up, you get fined. Once you get enough fines, you won't start picking it up when you're supposed to pick it up, that's just my opinion, I think we need to get with our IT guy, create something where the citizens can churn in and say, hey, my garbage wasn't picked up Monday, they didn't pick it up, and as a board, ain't it in the contract? It's in the contract that if they don't do what they supposed to do, then there's consequences. But me personally, we, we got people that owe this county, we got people that we filing lawsuit against, and we, we don't talk about them publicly like we talk about the other people. I just think if we do it in the right way, it's gonna be a win-win for the county. And... Something just hit me when I got this this morning, and the map of the civil rights site, and when I saw my place, there used to be, uh, a meeting place for civil rights leaders, owned by the Reverend Henry and Alan Russell, and they got on here, the Falk of the Rose, one of the biggest slave markets, the second largest slave market in, in, in the South, I'm gonna say this, 'cause it need to be said, uh... People was bought and sold, that's why they called them slaves, I guess, they was bought and sold, and they had a lot of that going on, because that's how people made their money, when they bought slaves and made the slaves do the work for nothing. That way back then. It's two thousand and twenty-four, and people still being bought in two thousand and twenty-four. Man, black people need to wake up, man, that's crazy. Two thousand and twenty-four, and you allow people that's still value. So... If a person show you who they are, sometimes you need to believe it. They always told me, you reward loyalty with loyalty, and you reward disloyalty with dis... Ain't, ain't gotta be, but just stay away from it, that's, that's how I see it, and you do it any kind of other way, that ain't intelligent at all. Very unintelligent. And last, you know, I got a list. Where my list go, bitch? Okay. My sympathy goes out to Washington family, the Berry family, the Miles South family, the Edmonds family, the Green family, the Brooks family, the Thomas family, that's where the young lady got killed over by my way, which I've been requesting cameras for I don't know how long, because it's a crime area, maybe we'll get some cameras now, and to my knowledge, they said Frankie Beverly, one of my favorites, uh, passed away, and after James Earl Jones, the Brown family, and one of the Jackson boys, Tito Jackson passed. Uh, I'm gonna say this. I think we have a good board, and it's gonna take some time out of all of our schedule to come together and figure out how we gonna handle this budget, because I got a feeling that we didn't raise taxes, and I, I don't know what the cash balance is, or do we have one, but everybody gonna have to work together, because right now, I don't see everybody working together, and it's too much backbiting, and people just ain't working with people, and, and, and when you're in a situation like we in, uh, when somebody tell you that you need to cut back on your spending, you need to cut back on your spending, and when we adopted budget, when we adopted the budget, October the first, always, from October to December, there's a period of, of time when we don't have that money coming in, and we ask people not to spend too much during that period of time, till we start getting our money to come in, and if they do start spending, it's a possibility we might have, have to get a tax participation law, we hadn't had to do that in a couple of years, but I'm just telling you what I see, and that concludes my report.
Alright, Mr. Jackson?
Uh, first name is, I want to talk about our use tax money, I went to a meeting, um, last week, and the discussion came up about the use tax meeting, uh, money, I'm sorry. Um, we probably need to look at starting spending this money as soon as we can, because right now, the city is fighting about the use tax money, because they talking about getting rid of it all together. So, we need to probably join in with the city and this, and, and the fight for it, because if they get rid of their city's use tax money, you know who's next, we are. So, we need to find out what's going on there, Scott, you need to look into that, because they talking about getting rid of the use tax money. That came up in that meeting. Um, next thing is, I need to get a proposal for the local workforce board meeting on September the eighteenth, uh, with no travel expense.
So, go ahead.
Move by Mr. Middleton, second, uh, by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carries.
My next one is, uh, I want to elaborate on what supervisor Gray said, also about the shooting on George Delfa West Boulevard, that was really sad, and that you hurt about a seventeen year old, around here carrying a gun, um, and caused a life that was unnecessary. When parents, you know, back in the days, our parents knew what we was doing. Today, kids are just all over the place, parents have no clue of what their kids doing. We need to start checking our kids, their rooms, their drawers, because I know my mom's at home, I checked everything, and so we need to, even phones, we need to start checking their phones, because a lot of that is translated through phones also, so, uh, I'm asking parents, check your kids, you know, we... We have a problem, once the, um, incident occur, we wanna cry, we wanna say what happened to our kids and everything, but if you take the time to check and see what's going on with our kids, we wouldn't be there. So, I'm just asking parents, start checking your kids... So I'm just asking parents, start checking your kids, you know, their rooms, their, whatever you need to do to try to occur some of all these shootings that's going on. And that's all I have to say.
All right, Ms. Hutchinson. Thank you, Ms. Gaines.
Well, I just kinda make sure we don't really have a report, just listening and uh, just looking at reality, looking at the newspaper, um, nah, I don't love the newspaper, I'm talking about, uh, News App, uh, looking at the very little bit of TV, uh, television that I do watch. It seems like all, um, the good news is bad news. Seems like what people want to report, I was watching Francine Storm, everything that they did, it was the bad news is making situations worse. But we in a country that a lot of people don't realize it, and we are in a country that's divided, divided more and more on every day. Uh, but, uh, and it is different set of rules that, uh, everybody play by. And you know, reality is there, but we are have responsibility of our own government. And if you can't have responsibility as a board, we have a responsibility of ourselves to each board member. And so, you know, I just summing up with what I heard this morning, first thing this morning, I, uh, heard a sound this morning that started my day. He said disciples did not ask to learn how to heal. All they asked for was learn how to pray. And so I ain't gonna tell nobody else what to do. But I see a lot of things at hand and probably a lot of things coming up. But what I'm gonna do is learn how to pray and ask God to give me some clarity to move in the right direction and make the right, right decision in some of these troubled times that we live in, I hear the floor.
Thank you, Ms. Gaines. Ms. Middleton.
Yeah, I wanna talk about something, uh, Mr. Searcy, I'm gonna look for your help on this. Uh, I was riding this weekend and, um, in between Liberty Ballpark and the Armory, there were three trucks parked, eighteen of them. Uh, and I rode through there, uh, and it appeared that this one, not only was he asleep, it looks like he threw his food and everything on the ground, just outside his truck. Um, so we need to put that on the map to go through there. Though, no trucks need to be parked there, in my opinion. Uh, there's people leaving Anches High School, there's people coming through there all the time, creates blind spots, it's just not a truck stop. So if y'all would please get somebody to go through there.
Yes, sir.
Especially on, I mean, all the time at night, but on the weekends. I mean, this is just, I mean, they're, they got chicken and shrimp thrown on the ground, just threw it out the street, and some liquid stuff. So if you would, I think that's all keeping out of that, absolutely. Uh, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Middleton. Ms. Dean?
I don't really know. I have a couple of things. Um, need to have the September and October bonds spread across the minutes for Tracy Davis, um, Lakeisha Green, LaShay Riley, Linda Golden, Shirley Emery, and Diane.
Need a motion. Motion by Mr. Gaines. Second, taken by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor? Any names? Motion carries?
Uh, we received the renewal for the pool insurance, and pleased to say that it decreased by almost four thousand dollars. Yes.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Middleton, second by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor? Any names? Motion carries?
I have the August, um, twenty twenty-four tax redemption settlement that needs to be spread across the minutes, please.
So moved by Mr. Middleton, second by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carries?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Slower.
Uh, we have a minus property where they had came back and cleaned it up on three twenty-nine Southmore Drive. The work road crew has given us cost of expenses, which they're asking to be assessed onto the property. The cost is eight hundred and six dollars and fifty-eight cents. And you can also penalize them to halve that cost or to an amount of twelve hundred dollars on top of it. It's up to the board.
Three twenty-nine, what?
That's not more, no, I mean, I mean, if they cleaned it up, put on taxes, I've been looking, um, at the property, um, they're trying to find out who, who it belongs to, you can't, cause, uh, I have, um, lady called me that interested in purchasing the property, and, um, she said she been to the transfer and she been in there, gave her a number, and it's some mortgage, she contacted the lady who previously that we looked up that you found on there. But she said it's loaned to a mortgage company or something like that, and she's trying to purchase the property. Yeah, because several people, you know, was looking into wanting to purchase the property, you know, to go ahead and buy it and fix it, but.
Who, who paying the taxes?
Mortgage companies gonna have to pay, they gonna have to pay for cutting the grass, anything else where he says them.
The mortgage company. So, but, you know, I, I mean, just me as a, uh, one board member, I'll make a motion to charge them to click, uh, the prices on what it takes them to clean up, but I don't, I would not, you know, charge a, additional four or twelve hundred dollars.
All right, moved by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Gray. Any discussion?
Well, uh, like you must Gary say, if you put that additional charge on, then it's gonna make it hard for somebody to get rid of their property with all these additional fees. We just want to clean and cut and whatever it cha- costs to do that.
Well, this being a mortgage company, um, you wanna get their attention? You add some more fees to them, and they'll have to take care of it.
I thought an individual owned it, but mortgage company, I don't know, I might just shut them up.
So I, I mean, you know, we
I, I think that you need to get the mortgage company's attention. They can't just have these probably just sitting around all over our county and think that they can just ride, go cut the grass for them and all that.
But, uh, I will say, I mean, I don't know if it is, but the lady, um, well, in fact, the attorney. I called her attorney about it, and, uh, you remember that?
I don't, but I believe you.
You don't?
You don't have a bad, you have a bad
But I, I didn't get back in touch with the lady, cause you said that for at this point, the property still belongs to the lady, the taxes hadn't been paid, and the property was still her name. Uh, so, so the property, so they said the court had shown, but according to the attorney, I had him to look it up, and they said the property actually belongs to her, she won't lose it until she pay a dispute.
No, they confirmed that it is owned by a property owner. Right now, the mortgage company hasn't taken it.
Hasn't taken it, so it is, it's, so it's all my property.
All right, any more discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carries? All right, Scott, you're, you're on deck.
Mr. President, I forget it now. Uh, Scott, let, let, let me mention this. Uh, with the, uh, little website, Adams County, Mississippi, Porter, what you go on and look up all this stuff, and, uh, whose job is it to update that? Because it's not updated.
You had to not update it regularly.
GI?
GI.
Is that people damn?
The GF World.
Could you test base with him and tell him?
I have GI, you know.
Could you test base with him and tell him that, uh, it's, it's, it's saying current date nine sixteen twenty-four, but just like he says, you could go on the site and, and it'll say Ricky Gray owned it, but Ricky Gray then lost it in one of these companies, then done, done got it, but it's still in my name.
Yeah, it's not every day, it, it changes periodically, but I'll ask him what we were at on. And you, and you can't rely on that, I mean, it's good
So I ain't paying him for that.
But you wouldn't have it at all if you didn't make, yeah, you're paying him, I don't figure what their, what their annual is, it's a lot.
Well, he paying for the sentence, it needs to be updated.
Yeah, I'm sure he's gonna blame you on taxes, says it's off this.
Well, taxes says it's got a site where it's updated. I ain't gonna blame you on them when they site updated.
Well, I mean, they gotta get it to make sure taxes is gone.
Okay. Scott, did you have any name?
Had an item determined, and then Supervisor Gray asking about the tax collection ILA that we'd had. Had sent the last two, eighty-eight was basically when they got one done, and ninety-five is when the last one we've had, and we've been based on the same, brings a sense. And it's a percentage of collections, but capped at fifty thousand dollars a year. That's been the same. That's it.
Okay, Ms. Washington.
Yes, I had a, um, request from Corbett Mill to do a, um, water cooler rental, um, in amount of fourteen dollars a month and a charge of eight eighty for each three gallon of water to, um, be utilized by the water dispenser. Um, just permission to enter into this lease agreement.
Okay, that's for water coolers?
For this building.
Okay, any motion? Moved by Mr. Gaines. Need a second? Second by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carries?
I have a, um, crime and fidelity coverage policy for the tax collector, um, just wanted to spread it across the minutes. It is a premium of five hundred, um, that was included, but it's for the period, um, for, uh, nine seven three nine seven of this year to twenty twenty-five.
Need a motion? Moved by Mr. Gaines, second by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carries?
I need permission to amend the budget for the twenty twenty-four fiscal year to actual before September thirtieth, and then following that to be spread across the minutes before October thirty-first. I need permission to amend the budget to actual.
Moved by Mr. Gaines. Second by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? To amend them. One for budget. I need some help.
Then I just had a, uh, application for leave for myself.
Okay.
Uh, for dates, um, September the twenty-ninth for medical leave for eight hours for doctor's appointment, and then, um, September the thirtieth through October the fourth for vacation leave time. Um, I will be working from home if I need to.
Okay. You heard request, moved by Mr. Gaines. Second by Ms. Hutchins.
When was the date?
Any discussion?
September the third, twenty-third, and then, uh, September the thirtieth through October the fourth, and I'll be available. I have, uh, remote access to the system if I, if I'm needed.
October what?
October fourth.
All right, all in favor? Any names? Motion carries? Okay, bring it back around to me. Um, I need a motion to, from Ms. Clementine Lewis to go to MS Fall Workshop the twenty-ninth through the thirty-first. Uh, travel only, I believe. Moved by Ms. Hutchins, second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion?
Mr. Middleton.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Middleton. Uh. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names?
Uh, Mr. President.
Motion carries?
Paige, did we get ours approved?
For your October travel? Yes.
It wasn't approved? Okay, I just had all the stuff.
You just had all done.
Do you need that out of here?
Uh, Corvette probably isn't back, um, now, put it
Okay. Okay, I got a, oh. Request for leave on nine twenty-seven for a doctor's appointment from Vernon Johnson. I need a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Gray, second by Ms. Gaines. All right, any discussion? All in favor? All in favor? Any names? Motion carries? All right, um, this is from nine nine, uh, for the next meeting, could you please place the volume out, item on the general request for Justice Court overtime? Uh, I wanted to follow up the conversation I had with Crisetta upon her return to work, where in Crisetta overtime was pre-approved for overturn during my absence, I would like to confirm that this is indeed the case. This is from Vernon Johnson.
What happened?
She was gone for three weeks, and it was just Crisetta and one other girl most of the time. And they asked for overtime, and I think we approved it.
No.
We did not approve it. So, uh, have you, have you seen this question?
No.
Well, I've not. They asked us to check the minutes and, um,
Approved overtime?
No, it was just, when, when, uh, uh, I guess when Vernon was out, and there was just two people over there instead of three or four.
Cause some Crisetta told Verna that they got approval for overtime.
You checked the minutes.
The minutes don't say any approval overtime, not for me. And they're but, over budget anyway.
Yeah, we, we've talked about
And the mistake was made, why would they have to work overtime? Um, because I'm having you, you saying it, why, why didn't you need to work overtime?
We talked about maybe compensating her for doing it, but then we decided it'd be hard to backtrack once, if we compensated her for being.
Right.
I, I remember that part too. Uh, okay, so there would be no motion on that. All right, um, okay, got it. I think everybody already knows this, but, uh, Audrey, my honor, Justice Court Judge, I am sorry to announce because of health and other concern, but I'm unable to continue in the duties as also Justice Court Judge of the First Judicial District of Adams County, Mississippi. To that end, I am tendering my resignation from that office effective immediately. We need to spread this across the minutes. I need a motion to accept the resignation, moved by Mr. Gray, second by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion?
You need to find a replacement, you also gotta order a special election.
Uh, uh, Mr. President, uh, we got to order a special election, okay, is it gonna be, uh, with whoever's gonna replace Larry to? All it gonna happen together?
Be the same.
Right.
Same day.
So how long we have to do this?
Y'all need, statute seems to really imply urgency over it, it doesn't give you a specific date, but it even says that basically, the majority of the board can appoint without even a meeting, if they're not in session when this happens. So there's a, interpretators, there's a sense of urgency to go ahead and, and do it, but they don't say within five days. There is a requirement that we order a special election within ten days, which we're, we are doing with this motion, presumably.
Is, is the election coming up?
No, it's not, it's gotta be within ninety days. The election, special election has to have at least ninety days of notice, so to speak. So you can't use, it's, it's the second, first Tuesday after the, Monday of November twenty twenty-five.
So can we do that?
Oh. We carry this motion and then discuss?
Yeah, y'all carry the motion and then discuss.
All in favor? Any names? Motion carries? Okay, um, I was under, understanding originally that we were gonna do it in, uh, November twenty-five, Vernon, uh, is there an, an election coming up?
November twenty-five is when it has to be, because it's the, the, the election that's being coming in Nov- this November twenty-four is not ninety days from now. So the law says you have to have a ninety day, at least ninety days between, that they can see in the special election.
So they don't have
So it, but it don't have to be November next year, we can set a special election as that's the record, that's not the record.
That is not my understanding of the law. The special election day is set on the Tuesday after the first Monday of November. That's when special election day, so I can pull that to be sure, but
You say we gotta wait almost a year?
More than a year. Yeah.
More than a year and two months, so we don't have any election.
Check, check, you check it.
I'll check it, I'll check it before sending over the, the resolution, but I'll double check, don't hurt to double check.
Uh, do we, do we have an election that's coming up for the, at, for Adams County anytime in the next, what?
Come out, is that a judge, when is the judges' election?
It's the year before y'all's election.
So that's two and a half years, or three years, almost. So that's two and a half years, or three years almost.
I didn't know you had to wait that long. Check it out, Scott.
Okay, um. I know there's been a lot of interest in people wanting to, uh, be, uh, the judge, uh, including former judge, Aileen Meyer, uh.
Aileen Meyer?
I mean, Mayor, Mayor, I'm sorry. Aileen Myers. Vernon's expressed interest, um, several other people. I'm sure all of y'all got a call from somebody. Um, so. Is this something we want to discuss in open session? I mean, because you're gonna bring candidates up and they, we're gonna have to, um, vet them a little bit. I don't know if you wanna actually interview. Now, for the time being, and Danny Barber said he would handle everything he could. He seems like, uh, Scott, if you talk to him at all?
Not specifically addressing this.
If any of you, does anybody talk to him? I'm just getting this information from, and I guess I could go talk to him.
I know that he attempted to help.
Yeah, he did offer help where at one time we told, uh, somebody else that they would not help. Push on some, what? Uh, but at any rate, so, um.
I'm gonna ask a question like, um, President Nelson stated. I know they're not employees now, but like you say, there are some good things and bad things about some of them that we can discuss, that we like to discuss, and that cannot be done in this second session?
Probably can, if y'all wanted to.
I would, I would rather, we have an exact session anyways, already brought up, we would have. I would rather not, you know, you may know something about somebody I don't know something about and we start. I, I don't want it to be.
I believe it need to be done in open session.
Well, when we come out, we can talk about it a little bit more, but some of that stuff.
It's, it's. It shouldn't be that big of a deal to me. I mean, uh, it ain't that big of a deal. I mean, the only thing I'm concerned about being open, honest and fair, and the only way you're gonna be fair is do it out here in an open way, everybody can understand what's going on. And this is just me saying this, uh, no disrespect with, with, with your two supervisors, but it only affect us and, and, cause, cause the voting precinct comes out of three, four and five and, and, and the way I look at it is, is, is. That's just the way it is.
Well, that technically, it sounds right when you say it, but according to the Supreme Court, the nominee does not have to come out of the northern district.
I understand that.
Okay.
But to make it fair.
Because they see cases from all of the county, all of them.
Are they doing that now?
They have to because.
Oh, they doing that, Scott?
People know one another.
Are elected by electors of two different districts. Both of them hear cases from all, so the southern district hears northern cases and northern district hears southern cases.
So it's just like we are elected by districts, but we are responsible for the entire county.
That's a good.
That's same thing they do. What I'm saying is, uh, the person that's gonna be elected coming out of one, uh, coming out of three, four and five. Is that not true?
The.
The boxes that, that this person's gonna run for comes out of the northern district. Is that not true?
Northern district, that's right.
Okay, the northern district consists of boxes three, four and five.
I would can pull it up, you say?
I already know.
Well, I tell you what we can do. Let's, let's get a list of names, the names that have been submitted to each one of them and we'll open that list.
Um, what, what, before you go, Mr. President, Scott, Scott, because I, I don't know if I've been telling people wrong or not. I'm gonna use myself because I ain't gonna call them by the name. So if Ricky Gray is interested in being the northern judge and I don't have no experience and I don't have a law degree, so do they, they not gonna let me put on a robe and go up there fresh out of the street and, 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 and start using the devil and, and, and without taking the classes that you supposed to take, right?
You do have to take classes. I think you would start and then you still have to take classes within a year of appointment of office, I think is how it works.
So you can get anybody out the street to do that?
You gotta have a GED or high school diploma and you have to live in the county.
Okay, at what point will they start, uh, going to the classes to get up to speed on what they supposed to be doing? Because even though I've been in government a long time, if you put a robe on me, that's totally, uh, different for me. I'm gonna be over there guessing what to do. I don't need no battle over that guessing when you playing with people alive. They need to have some kind of experience. I can't do your job without some training.
The only one I've heard of was Aileen Myers that has experience in, but at the judgeship, but other than that, I don't, I don't know of anybody else. Oh, I'm sorry. I missed one. Call me back.
You ain't heard me.
Yeah, I got, I got a lot of people from the public that ain't had no experience. And I got.
I got a lot of people from the public and then.
I got, I got, I got.
Most of them can run for the judgeship. We get somebody in there that already knows what to do. I think, I think we.
Chad, I'm gonna be honest with you, man, cause you, you, you know I'm gonna be honest with you. And I'm gonna be honest with you, boy. It shouldn't be a black and white thing, but at the end of the day, you know goodness well, we cannot appoint a white judge. And if we do, we gonna get it.
I think that's a very forte saying. Said you like to be honest, but I, I don't think in this day and time anybody should say that, but.
But you don't.
All work, but while I say we need somebody that's experienced and anybody can run for the judgeship later on when, when we have an election. But if we're gonna get, get a fair, uh, judging by somebody, we need a judge that has experience is what I was saying. Well, I'm sorry, y'all getting me stalemate here. What, what do you wanna do?
I think. I think. Right now, if, if Danny Barber could fill in until we can get our heads together. I mean, that's a very premature to try and make a decision today.
How do we, uh, how do we, uh, what do we do about Danny Barber, uh, having to carry a double?
We have a special meeting or call meeting in a week to do something that today is.
That happens anyway, he can't get compensation for this.
Can what?
He can't get compensation for that. Unless we reach out.
No, no, yeah, no justice court judge.
Let me ask you this question. I know Judge Davis, Austin Stewart have filled in some. Austin?
Dixon.
Dixon, Dixon.
You talking about Lee Dixon?
Yeah.
Oh, I love, I love Lee Dixon.
That's what I'm saying, it's awesome, I think, awesome, I'm thinking of.
What, is he retired?
He's a judge, he's a justice court judge in Wilkinson County. He came down here once in four to fill in for something.
Right. You think we can make, see if he would like to fill in some too?
I, I don't see. I think y'all wait until you're comfortable and appoint somebody that they're doing next, next meeting.
Yeah.
I don't think you can appoint someone temporarily outside of.
They have to be one, two Adams County.
The only ability to point a circuit judge can appoint somebody.
Yeah, that's, that's just waiting to see if Danny Barber.
Next, next meeting, then on the, on October the seventh.
Yeah.
Could Danny fill in?
Certainly, they'll, they'll get a bomb with it, so.
I think that's the best way.
All right. All right.
That's the decision we make, who can be stuck with.
Yeah. Four years.
Fourteen months.
So, so supervisor, I, I try to keep it real as I can keep. And I'm gonna use this as an example. This is the kind of world we living in. Just say, and pray to God that don't nothing happen to me. Just say something happened to me and this boy had to replace me.
Pretty sure you have to live in your district. Most, most positions you have to live in, I'm sorry, but most positions.
You gotta live in your district. I got all kind of people live in district four, but what I'm saying is, if, if, if you thinking correctly, you wouldn't recommend a white person to replace me in district four, would you?
I mean, you would want to get somebody that would represent.
Well, even a, even a.
I'm just being honest, man, see.
Yeah, well, even, even a black individual would have to, they don't have to live in your district actually. They can run for that office, but they have to move to it, I believe. They, they have, they have got some of, there's some worldly rules.
Oh, I understand rules, but, but. I understand the rules, but I'm just putting the truth out there.
Okay, uh, we're gonna move on because we're gonna, we're gonna, we decided Danny Barber's gonna take a, we're gonna get Danny Barber fill in, do everything he can and then we'll, we'll decide on the seventh and everybody needs to have a kind of clear idea of what, what they wanna argue about or talk about.
We gonna make a decision, move on, be done with.
We will see. All right, Board of Supervisors, writing to you, this is from, uh, Larry Gardner and most of y'all know that he's retired, but I, I need to spread it across the minutes.
Mr. President, so with Scott gone, so they gonna have to be without election commissioners for that long?
I, I think I can appoint, it's my appointee. I think, you know, for the, cause it's district twos.
I'm just joking, man.
Well, I just, I just, because the press, we kinda need to clear things up.
I know.
They, they, they might not know.
So are you, you got somebody in mind?
I've got somebody in mind, but they haven't decided, you know, they're like tentative about it and I need, I need an answer. And you really, this is something, you just really want somebody in there that cares about the community.
My question is, uh, the election for that, the election commission gonna be the same time the election for the judge?
That's the most uncomfortable part for this person, they don't wanna have to run for office. And I'm like, usually election commissioners never.
Not the person that he appoints.
No, no, obviously if they wanna stay in there, but I don't, never see, I've never seen an election commissioner contested, actually.
Me, me.
Cause it's not a, uh, not the best job, so I like Ricky Gray's job. Okay, Larry Gardner, I'm writing to inform you the decision to resign from Adams County Election Commission effective September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. This will allow you ample time to replace me prior to the next election. Okay. I'll be moving from Natchez to our house, to our new house gets completed in September. My wife and I are continually having to deal with severe medical issues and have decided to move closer to the family and medical facilities. He's moving close to Birmingham. This will allow us to spend more time with grandchildren in, in the city. Cause, because we are moving to another state, I will no longer be able to perform my duties as Adams County Election Commissioner. I have enjoyed working with the members of the board as well as other election commissioners and hopefully had a positive impact on our county. I would also like to thank you for all your support and opportunities afforded to me in the county and to our citizens. I will miss the activity and camaraderie. I have made a lot of friends in Adams County over the last forty-five years that I've lived here. All right, all right, and, uh, we gave a resolution. Okay, need a motion for the resignation. Moved by Ms. Hutchins, second by Mr. Gray. Any discussion?
Mr. President, I'm gonna say this. I've been elected since two thousand and my whole time of being an elected official, I think me and Mr. Gardner had one disagreement in my whole time of, 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 of being elected. And, uh, I ain't got nothing but respect for him. People don't agree on everything, but at the end of the day, uh, maybe I won't believe it, but at the end of the day, to me, just what the heart and soul of, 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 of that department over there because it's hard for me to even picture going over there and not even seeing him, man. I ain't got nothing to respect for.
Been there since nineteen ninety, I believe. So, yeah, uh, I, I went to this lunch at Pearl Street last week to, uh, say goodbye and hand him one of our Adams County flags and the proclamation, so, yeah, he was, he was, he was a good, he was a good man. Um, so, uh, uh, we need to finish that.
You need to carry the motion.
Carry the motion, yes. All, all in favor? All in favor?
I'm passing the.
Any nays? Motion carry.
I'm passing the statutes that show the special election is on that first Tuesday after the first Monday each year. And then the other one shows it's gotta be ninety days and if they're held in special election day.
I'm sorry, Scott, say that again.
What did you say?
I just showed you where the law is, it's gotta be. Twenty-five. It's not a president, we had a couple of, with, with Justice Court judges too. Couple of different resignations.
Y'all had a couple?
What's that?
You say y'all had a couple.
I know we had at least one, well, no, we had two before this.
Really? I know the one was sick.
One was sick and then one resigned.
One resigned?
I don't think we have this in our budget for a special election. What does it cost, fifty thousand dollars?
It'll be twenty-five, it'll be after fiscal year ending, twenty-five, so it'll be next year.
Yeah.
Fiscal year ending twenty-sixth.
It's not like that money's just gonna magically appear. Okay, um. We all signed the resolution for Mr. Gardner, uh, and, uh, we need to spread this across the minutes. Do I need to read it or? I just need a motion to, um, for the resolution for Larry Gardner. Spread across, moved by Ms. Middleton, second by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor? Any nays? Motion carries.
Now you need a motion ordering special election.
Okay.
It's gotta be within ten days of the reservation.
Okay, need a motion to special election. Moved by Mr. Gray. Seconded by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor? Any nays? Motion carries.
Did y'all have somebody from the district two?
Or, uh. I have somebody that hasn't given me the answer, so I might have to look elsewhere. So I have to do it on the next.
Supervisors, they do both jobs.
Y'all are justices of the peace by virtue of your offices, so y'all are sure enough and do it.
There you go.
I got somebody I should have asked, I wish I had.
Case of your party don't wanna do it, you can't find somebody, you might have two heads on it, sir.
Okay, um. Mr. Slower, um, I continually get complaints about this garbage and then, then we see the trucks they got in here that doing things. They're not doing things legally, I don't think, I don't think that they showed up here, they could show me the insurance. I don't think they could show me any records and I, I, literally, you cannot get in touch with the sanitation department because I think most of these calls are going unheard and I don't know if they're supposed to email the sanitation department. If they can't get them, I don't know what we're supposed to do.
The sanitation department, the Adams County?
I, I called them myself a couple times last week, couldn't get them, um. But, so anyway, I, 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 there's so much missed pickup. I've got people texting me over and over again, trash didn't get picked up. I say, let me know when it gets picked up. It's like somewhere around forty-eight hours later, it, it, it's. I say, let me know when it gets picked up, it's like somewhere around forty-eight hours later, it, it's out there, the dogs are tearing it up. Um, the, I, I think one of the biggest problems I have besides those things, and the fact that I don't believe they have what they need to continue the service, is the, the newest pictures of them picking up in, uh, in the back of a pickup truck, uh, piled up like three or four feet above the bed, um. Uh, where are we with that, you sent another letter out, you got no response to the first one. How, how long do they have to do something about the next one, cause, um, we, we need to do something. The, the other thing, I was, I kinda lost my train of thought of where I was going, I really believe, uh, Ricky, of the problem with why we have a six hundred thousand dollar deficit, I think we're paying them to do nothing in a lot of spots. I don't think we've had five thousand five hundred receptacles or pickups.
Well, we need to find out.
We sure do, cause we are, we're, we're gonna be a little stupid here when we get down.
I sure don't wanna be paying for something that we don't know.
Certainly, and, and that, that doesn't appear anybody's gonna volunteer the information.
So Scott, what, what, what procedure, uh, do we do to find out exactly how many houses, uh, 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 that they supposed to be picking garbage up at?
You basically sent them notice, we want a house count, and then we figured out a method of house counting, in the past, when we did a house count, the county administrator and the whoever the project manager for, for the garbage pickup would sit on a truck, and they would, both of them would count.
Uh, E nine, excuse me, Mr. President, so E nine one one could not be an easy help for that, because they uh require house numbers and stuff like that. Do they have a, would they have somewhat of an accurate record that you might have to work on, like somebody might be died and not there? Would that be, uh, would that, would that help them to get a E nine one one count?
We certainly could ask for E nine one one to give us the housing number, and we can look at that and see if it's accurate or not. Same thing with billing statements with sanitation.
The problem, they, they know when houses go online for water or, but they don't know when they come off the line. So they, that would not be accurate at all, cause it, that, that's going back seven, eight years, they, they, they'll, you have to outnumber your house when you wanna get electricity. But then when you, it gets shut off, somebody dies, the house gets abandoned, they don't know, so, so it's gonna have to be a house to house count.
I said, I, I, I had asked for, uh, I said a good starting point, that's what, that was, that's what I said, was it a starting point that they can work off of? Like, you know, and that, that's what I said, cause I know some of them died, some of them not there anymore, people to move, but I just, that, that's what I thought, but I get you, right?
And I, I, the only problem I have with Stephanie doing that is, cause she doesn't know the county.
Yeah.
Uh, and.
Yeah, and I wasn't necessarily, I was just saying that.
Yeah, but we, we, uh, I, I think, I think that Robbie needs to do.
Let, let me ask you a question.
He can just say if you.
I'm awake.
Don't all houses in the county have to pay taxes on them houses?
Uh, yeah, but you don't know if somebody lives there or not.
Huh?
You don't know if somebody lives there or not.
What do you mean?
Just cause you pay tax on something, I mean, somebody lives there.
You got that zip code, so, you got that zip code.
Yeah, we have, uh, pass a little bit, get in there with him, and he familiar with the county, he can do it.
He's easygoing, and he don't care. That's what I like to hear, okay, but, so, Scott, how long's the letter been out? The second letter? I, I just wanna know what y'all wanna do, you continue down this road, we're paying them, and, and all these people complaining, you got all these pictures people sending in. That, the, the pickup truck thing with three foot of garbage piled over the top of it?
Where the picture at?
Oh.
I, I just think we need to have a, a system where it's just like my garbage, in my area, my garbage supposed to got picked up Thursday.
This, these two.
I don't know where.
And if you don't know what that is, they, they're running a dumpster down the road on the truck and throwing the garbage in.
Mine got, mine was supposed to be Friday, and to get picked up on Saturday, and I'm thinking they were a day behind, cause of that weather.
My mom, all her neighborhood, they went down Georgia West, but they didn't turn up in Darnin and, and Bedford, they didn't even go up in there and pick her garbage up. Period, and that's, there's Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, so in a situation like that, if, if, with what we got set up, if they miss picking up all them days, could we find somebody for all those days? That's what we need to be trying to do.
A hundred hours a day per residential unit until they pick up.
That's why I say the IT guy can look at this website that I saw from Brooke Haven.
They're supposed to document this.
Right, well, Shea's been, been told to do it, the, the ticketing system sounds real smart, I mean, that, that actually, they could probably be implemented where they send it out as soon as it's west, and they get a writing, track it and everything, I think that's a good idea, really.
You, you'll get somebody to tend to real fast.
That gives you an easy. That gives you easy communicate with your constituents, and they complain to you, you can say, look on this side, when they miss the pickup, click on it.
We do need to bring somebody, somebody to come to.
Tent, this one. Tent is when they get sent out, the week ago.
Yeah, so I, I don't know, we do need, uh, we need, we need to have a physical bond to the board and have a conversation, and like I say, I don't know what, uh, they had to do, cause I've been getting a lot of calls also, but on my way to, uh, to the meeting, this morning, I did see a look like a brand new, uh, truck this morning coming out of country, uh, garbage truck. But, I don't know, but I mean, we got a, we got a problem that need to be corrected, and we definitely need to have somebody that say, we need to have a physical person here that we can talk to and, uh, look over this, so we can get it, get it corrected, cause I do get a fair amount of calls and a fair I got a pretty good score in these last few weeks right here, uh.
Do you call in there and tell Shea?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, she already had called, told Shea, uh, some of the people that followed up had already called, uh, down there, so.
So what we need to start doing, if, if it's not picked up, the day it's supposed to be picked up, and, and she got the list of what, a record of it, well, we start doing some filing.
And supervisor Gray, young, I couldn't remember supervisor Gray, uh, I, I, I did take it, your advice, and I know you, you said it as a paper trail, so when I did get called, I did call in to, but, but, and make her aware, and she did reach out to, uh, but some most of the residents had already reached out to sanitation before they called me, but we did follow up, so it is a, you know, a record that checks and balances the call.
You know, when I rear the bag growing up, man, as long as I get a whip, I started with rear, rear bag, and when you pull out that whip and crack me a couple times, I'm like, ooh, I can't do that no more, we got to find.
I don't, I don't, uh, I do receive a lot of phone calls in, in my district, and I have received a handful outside my district, just people that know me, and, and I've told every one of them, call sanitation and file a complaint, because it's no secret, I didn't vote for the company. So I don't wanna call over there and say that they're not doing their job, because it's gonna, they're just gonna say I don't want them, you know what I'm saying? So that resident.
They call you, and you call them, that documentation, we can do our job.
I want to land on what they did.
Yeah, um, and the, the company's name is Infrastructure, is that correct? Is anybody, United Infrastructure, has anybody seen a United Infrastructure truck?
I mean, I, I, I don't wanna say a hundred percent that I was coming in this morning, but, uh, I wanna say this morning that the green and white truck is green and white, and you had United Infrastructure on it. I, I, I wanna say it now, but I don't.
But so.
I'm thinking it was a, it was a new truck, it was green and white, I wanna say it different, I, cause I know the driver in that area, so I've seen the driver in it, and I know he have goals on that end all time, but I wanna, thank, I wanna say it with United.
Well, I, I'm gonna probably, I believe you will not find that the uh DOT numbers have ever been changed, and who knows what else has not been changed, but there are certain rules that they're supposed to follow, um, to work for Adams County. Alright, um, anybody got anything else? Have we covered everything? Okay, alright, need a motion for closed determination, moved by, uh, Mr. Gaines, seconded by Miss Hutchins. Uh, all in favor, uh, any nays, motion carries.